Carol.
Vice Mayor Dick G.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Landrum.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Spalding.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Speek.
Here.
Mayor Chris Howley.
Here. Next, we have approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes, which is May 14th, 2018. Without any changes, can I get a motion for approval?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Do we have any comments on that before we vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes carry. Next on the list is citizens' opportunity to address the council. Please, if you'd like to address the council, step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and please keep it to under three minutes.
Dunbar Road, 907 Cherokee Lane. You'd be glad to get rid of me first. No. What about say, I'm not discounting offers from either water company they presented what they have to offer. What they have not done, and what we do not have, is the financial analysis sheets of how much money they're going to make, when the payback period is. We ain't got anything like that. So, it would be hubus to try to analyze what would happen if we kept our own system. If we took the money that we have in the water maintenance fund, even if we had to spend it all, and bring the system up to date, we will be starting from a point where all revenue is exactly that, revenue. There will be no cost, or very few costs charged against revenue. And I think now, without Bo would have to go through all this. But we could sustain it, and maybe not even have to raise rates. It depends on how much net income we get, but there's got to be net income. Nobody in their right mind's going to throw $3.5 million at a project and not make money. They're going to. We've got to know how they do it, if they will tell us, if we can duplicate it, or if we can come up with our own way of keeping the system and making money for ourselves, and retaining a town asset. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, I'm Brad Schumpert, and you might remember my name because I was on the agenda meeting a couple of weeks ago. Because of time, it just didn't work out. I hate it that I wasn't able to come by and chat with you. But what I'm here for tonight is because...
Sir, if you could give your name for the, your address for the record.
33 Ridge Rock.
Thank you, sir.
Schumpert, common spelling. So, S-H-U-M-P-E-R-T. So, anyway, wasn't able to come by. What I wanted to chat with you about was what I think is the need for a little further community investigation into selling of the water system. I'm coming at it from a little bit of a different perspective. I served on the county commission as an elected official in Arkansas before we moved here. And as an attorney who's in charge of dispositions, selling stuff, acquisitions, buying stuff from half a million to $200 million every day, I just didn't feel like the due diligence had been done here, and our fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Signal Mountain has been achieved. Because I've kind of seen it like someone who was told their car had needed new tires. And we said, yeah, there's a little maintenance fee here. The best thing to do would be for us to sell this, take the money, and let's use Uber every day for the rest of our lives. That doesn't sound like a smart investment in the long run. So, I think we're, I'm really excited. I read today in the Chattanooga that MTAAS is now willing to step up and help be that third party, kind of be that, if you would, Consumer Reports to our shiny salesmen who have come in and said, is this a good deal? And if we can't have a viability committee with the citizens, I think it's only fair to step back and realize, this is a decision that will impact my children and generations to come. The least we can do is to take the time to let an independent third party like MTAAS make sure that all those numbers that you guys have become comfortable with are things that we can be comfortable with. And I'd still like to have my viability committee be able to present here, maybe at the next meeting. But if you won't let me do that, I think MTAAS is a good second choice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
George Ross, George Drive, although I spend most of my time in my car. I wrote this down because I've been told I ramble. So, what I've been hearing is, for a couple of weeks, that this is a no-brainer. And that seems to me, well, from what I've been able to research, a no-brainer is the opinion of many municipalities that previously have sold their systems, spent their windfall, and are now seeing what a poor decision that was. As their municipal debt inevitably starts to rise, they find they're under the rubric of what was for all intents and purposes, an unregulated monopoly. They get to enjoy skyrocketing water bills, poor customer service, and no way to escape. Just for fun, y'all should Google, "American Water sucks." Between 1999 and 2004, twice as many municipalities walked away from private water contracts as started them, including Atlanta, who walked away four years into a 20-year contract. I'm sure at the time, that seemed like a no-brainer as well. We have a system that has served us well for decades under town ownership and operation. We need to engage now, more than three of us, take a closer look at all the options, and do it before you find yourselves in the same sad mess as these other municipalities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Steve Kuhn. I live at 109 Louisiana Avenue, and I've been a resident of Signal Mountain for 40 years, and I've seen a lot of changes over this time. One of the things that bothers me most about the water issue is, I don't even know why we're discussing it. I've never, it's never been explained in a way that I can understand. You know, I'm a retired math professor for 40 years, so I'm, you know, I don't think I'm a dumb guy, but I have never gotten an explanation of why we're doing it in the first place, let alone why we're rushing things. It seems like the information from the MTAAS would be very helpful, input from the town members would be very helpful. If the council were to follow the precedent you set for this school system viability committee on this, that would make a whole lot more sense to me. That would keep the town residents' input clear and lay things out correctly. They can have a lot of meetings, and everybody can come, everybody can know what's going on. I feel like I don't know really what's going on. There seems to me to be a lack of candor, a lack of data, a lack of logic, a lack of transparency, and a lack of interest and concerns of the town council for the residents of Signal Mountain. So, I suggest at least a viability committee, and certainly free information that we can get from the experts, which we have, which we have not yet done. One other thing is, it's not related to the water issue, is that I attended the May 8th budget meeting, the work session, and came away appalled is probably the best word for it, that the, and I'll have to signal out, you Mayor Howley, in the conversation with Councilman Landrum, you were talking about the numbers that you were getting from the town manager and the town accountant, and basically you were saying, well, I don't believe their numbers, and I have my own numbers that I believe in more. You know, to me, that seems to be, you know, they're supposed to be the experts. And so, that seems to me that what you were saying is that you want sort of faith-based budgeting, instead of fact-based budget, which seems to me really a bad idea. And so, you know, I would, you know, the decisions about the budget should be based on facts, and they said it was based on actual data. And you seem to dismiss that. And what even worried me more was, most of the rest of the council was quiet. Didn't bother them at all. So, I just wanted to let you know that, what I felt about both of those issues.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Hudson, 1150 James Boulevard. I wanted to follow up on what Mr. Schumpert mentioned, and that was his request, as well as Dan Landrum's request, that he and his group would be able to make a presentation to you concerning their belief that there is a need for further assessment. I was at the agenda or the work session meeting where this came up, and I remember distinctly, and it made sense to me, when Ms. Speek said, well, why don't we call a special meeting for that, because the agenda is so full for July 9th? And it was. But since that work session, Noon Development withdrew their application, the planning commission didn't meet, so the reason for the duplex next to the post office is not on the agenda tonight. And so, that just left, from what I remembered, the big thing was the second and final reading on the budget and final vote. And so, I don't understand why, since the original reason that it was suggested it not be on the agenda, since that reason became void, that Dan Landrum's request was not respected or honored. I also would like to speak to, well, I sent you all an email, and I know you're just slammed with emails, and all of you work. So, when you go home, I hope you'll have time to read it. But it was just a series of questions, and that was one of the questions I had. A second was about the timely notification of this meeting. I received my email blast at 5:23 Thursday afternoon, July 5th, the day after the Fourth of July. And so, that was Friday, July the 6th, was one full business day. So, it wasn't even a full business day on July the 5th. And so, my question to you all was, what extraordinary means, even if not required by law, has the town taken to inform residents of this meeting, where a historical vote regarding the water system is on the agenda? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Jason String, 504 Brady Point Row. Fifteen-year-plus homeowner on the mountain, first time to come to a council meeting. I like to think that I stay abreast of the issues that are going on in the town, and I do that through the newspaper and through conversations at the grocery store, or the person across from me pumping gas. And while I echo the sentiments of the previous speakers, I'll share with you the sentiments of the people at the grocery store and pumping gas, and they're angry. And the more I look into it, so am I. It makes no sense to me, on such a big issue, that we would rush to a vote without making use of all available informational resources. It just defies reason. I think failure to do that would be grossly negligent. The second item I'd like to discuss is how it came to be that we would be having this discussion tonight, just as the previous speaker said, it wasn't on the agenda items from the last agenda meeting. Well, that's my informational resource to know when I should be here and tell you what I feel about it or not. Instead, I have to hear about it from the guy at the grocery store and the guy pumping his gas. I think failure, rushing it into the schedule, and failing to adhere to the items approved at the agenda meeting, or agreed to at the agenda meeting, reeks of skulduggery. So, I look at gross negligence and the potential for skulduggery, and I say that our answer to that is a recall vote. So, I guess I'll end by asking, which one of you is going to have the courage to make a motion to stick to the agenda items agreed to at the agenda meeting, and make use of these available resources we have before we make a decision about selling our water? Will it be you? Will it be you? You? Or you? Or you? Your legacy depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don Strickland, 1058 Quipwood Road Drive, where my wife and I have lived for 32 years. I think you've heard good reasons for studying this water system sale potential further. I've got a legal reason. More than one, actually. A vote on the proposed ordinances for sale of the town water system will violate the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act requires that this council give notice of what it proposes to do at a meeting. This council customarily gives notice of its intentions when it publishes the agenda. For the notice to be adequate and not violate the Open Meetings Act, the contents of the notice or the agenda must reasonably describe the purpose of the meeting or the proposed action to be taken, and must fairly inform the town citizens. Insofar as the water system ordinances are concerned, the notice states simply, "Discussion, resolution, ordinance." The notice does not state or remotely suggest there will be a vote. It has been custom, when this council was to vote on an ordinance, the words "first reading" or "second reading" would appear after the ordinance. Look at the budget item on tonight's agenda, where "second reading" appears twice. There is no such notation after the ordinances underwater system. Further, the record will reflect that at the June 29 meeting where the agenda was discussed, no ordinance was discussed, or even remotely suggested for being on the agenda for discussion or a vote. Rather, the council decided at that meeting that reference or submission to the planning commission would be on the agenda. A vote on either ordinance would violate the Open Meetings Act for lack of adequate notice. The notice or the agenda was also untimely. The notice was given on the afternoon of Thursday, July 5th, only two business days before this meeting. The notice was inadequate and violates the Open Meetings Act. Finally, there's a further reason this council cannot vote, or should not vote, on the ordinances. Tennessee Code Annotated Section 13-4-104 provides that before selling the town's water system, the matter must have been submitted to and approved by the planning commission, or of course, it can be disapproved. And the council has the power to overrule any disapproval. Only upon overruling the planning council, however, shall this council have the power to proceed. Passing an ordinance on first reading and then submitting the matter to the planning commission would not comply with the statute. In effect, passing the ordinance on first reading would be overruling the planning commission before the planning commission even had the matter properly under consideration. For the foregoing reasons, the council cannot, this council should not vote on the ordinances this evening. And before I close, I want to state for the record, the proposed ordinances have not been made available to the citizens at this meeting. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Bill, did you want to talk?
I'm sure he has no idea what I want to talk about. Bill, 212 North Palisades Drive. I'd like to talk a little bit about water. I had an opportunity back in February to participate in the RFP Review Committee, which was a great opportunity to learn a lot of nuts and bolts about each respondent's proposal. And I have to say, each of Walden's Ridge and Tennessee American did a very good job of providing information and addressing what we had put out in the RFP. Not to say they were perfect, but they were pretty good. But then, as a private citizen, on April 5th, I wrote to everyone in the council, just to express my view on our water system and possibilities going forward. My view, frankly, having been exposed to the system for 10 years, is that it is still very viable, and there are several studies that demonstrate that. If we sell it, unless there's been some subsequent negotiations with the respondents that will ensure that we can buy it back, then it's likely gone for good. And if we do keep it, I understand there are millions of dollars of work that need to be done. You know, Hidden Brook and Carriage Hill are probably good examples of that, and last numbers I saw were somewhere in the $3 million ballpark. But the big deal is that we haven't raised rates since 2011. And I have a feeling that, just from my take on the community, that if we proposed a 30 or 40% rate increase to make the system whole, that folks probably wouldn't be up in arms about it. There's certainly improvements that need to be made. I think we need to look at long-range planning, managers capable of doing that. And the Arcadis and MTAAS studies really bear out those points and the items that we need to address. But if you do elect to sell the system, my view is that Walden's Ridge is the best choice for the town, and more importantly, the town's rate bears. My opinion is based on Walden's superior financial offer, their nonprofit status, the lack of capital riders as imposed by Tennessee American, the quality and the source of their groundwater, which requires significantly less chemical treatment, and as to the stability of their water source, I'm convinced that Walden's Ridge is, while maybe not as stable as the Tennessee River, but they are drawing from a significant underground aquifer. And they also have several wells and a backup supply from the old Hickson Rock Quarry that a lot of us who have been here 50 years used to swim in. And that was pretty good water, actually. Can't complain about it. In addition, I think Walden's storage capacity here on the mountain, combined with our pump station, will give us a backup water source that every study the town's ever done on the water system has suggested we do. And that is an interconnect with Walden. If we sold to Walden, we'd have an interconnect with Tennessee American. And I think it's imperative that we do that. The other issue with Walden for me is that it really is an extension of Hamilton County government. It was formed by Hamilton County and has the thorough backing of the county. But my concern with Tennessee American, aside from the water source, is the high TTHM count due to the heavy chlorination. And I can remember when Tennessee American water was very, very good. I mean, it was, you know, you didn't mind drinking the tap water. Now, it tastes like, pretty much like chemicals, and I don't drink the tap water anymore. The other issue is significant litigation that's going on around the country with communities who want to remunicipalize their systems because of significant rate and ongoing rate increases, the capital riders, and reportedly, poor customer service. So, I appreciate your consideration of my thoughts on the matter.
Thank you, Bill. Give me one second. Bill, thank you also for your previous service, and thanks for helping out with this RFP. Just want to at least recognize that Bill is planning on running for council coming up in the next, in November election. Is Ms. Murdock here? Ms. Murdock, Ms. Susanna Murdock is also planning on running. Joe Durick, are you here, Joe?
Right here.
Right there. Mr. Durick, and I'm missing one other person.
Who's there?
No, I think there's five, though, isn't there?
Dan.
Oh, and Dan, I'm sorry, Dan. Dan. Dan Landrum, who's served us admirably in the last two years, but I wanted to recognize them. I also wanted to recognize one of our District 2 potential county commission candidates. Elizabeth Baker is here, will be running. In that end, there is going to be a public forum, two of them. One at Alexian tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. The public's invited. Well, you'll have a chance to be introduced to the three candidates who are going to be running for the judge position. They are Keith Grant, Amy, no, Andrea Haydek, and Gary Humble. Is anybody, either three of you here? All right. And then, there'll also be a question and answer with Mrs. Baker and Mr. Baker, Chip Baker. There's also a second one of those that'll be held a week later, Tuesday at 7 o'clock, at the Signal Mountain Golf and Country Club, just so everybody's aware. I'm sorry, I wanted to get that out while I was thinking of it. Since we were all out, you're running also. I've picked up papers. I haven't decided if I'm going to yet. It's been so much fun the last four years that I really needed it. Yes, sir.
Thank you for the chance to speak. I'm probably one of the younger town residents to get up and talk today and be here at this meeting.
Can you give your name and address?
Yes.
Just for the record.
Thomas Goggins.
Thank you.
710 Kentucky. My wife and I have lived at that residence, up here on the mountain, for about 10 years, going on 10 years. And we hope to live here for a lot longer and raise our children here. And the question of where our water is being sourced and how it is being processed, and all of the things that entail this question of the water utility system, is something that I think affects every single residence, myself, my children, on par with the same level of kind of seriousness that it should be approached as the school system viability. And when I get on the town website and look for information, I was here at the, I was here at the planning meeting about a week ago, a little over a week ago, and I heard different things being talked about, different documents, different figures pertaining to this. I can't find any of that information. So, I'm left wondering if this is such a big question, and from the standpoint of the citizens in this community, who are wanting to stay involved, wanting to know how it's going, wanting to know how it's going to affect them, why we wouldn't be forming a water viability planning committee? And/or why, even before that's formed, why the pertinent information that's going to affect the viability of that decision, the quality of the various water sources, the cost, all the different costs, immediate, long-term, why there isn't any of that information available readily to the citizens? That alone has been, has been a large concern to me. And I was, I was out of town, I haven't been able to follow up that. You know, I could have sent any of you messages. I haven't. Or I recognize there are things that I could have done to have tried to get some of that information. So, I'm not trying to put it all on the council, you know, but a week to try and find out that information from this standpoint of realizing how fast this was moving, realizing that there are some big votes coming up, that struck a little bit of concern for me. Aside from that, I'd certainly inclined more towards not taking our water out of the Tennessee River. But I don't, I don't have the, I don't have the documents and all the figures on the water quality tests, none of that. From another side point of kind of operations, a number of years ago, Tennessee American was trying to raise rates significantly, and I went down to the, to the Hamilton County Commission meeting to listen to that. And they brought forward a bunch of people talking about all the wonderful things they do in the community, how they donate to this, and they donate to that, and they're, all of these wonderful things. You know, those are nice, those are great, but that's not what Tennessee American is in business to do. And then, they're like, okay, and we want to raise all these rates really high. And it reminded me greatly of a character from one of Charles Dickens novels, who's a slumlord. And he has someone else go and beat down doors and kick people in the kneecaps and collect the money, and he comes around the day or two afterwards, passing out pennies to the children. Well, all of those, all of those wonderful programs they were talking about were pennies to the children. Their activities speak more than to their pennies to the children. So, I think we need to be careful about, careful about who we do business with. I think that's it for now. I'm sure there are things I'm forgetting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Daphne Kirksey, 1109 Applewood Circle. I'm a resident of Signal Mountain. I grew up here. My mom and her family moved here from Venezuela when my mom was 14. And I'm also an employee of Tennessee American Water. Most of you probably already know that. But I want to thank the town council for all the time that you've spent on studying this issue. It's a lot of work, especially for a part-time job, and it's a lot of information to process. A lot of it is very technical. I'm not a technical person. And as a matter of fact, before I started working for Tennessee American Water, I had no idea where the water for the town of Signal Mountain came from. Like many mountain communities, we Like many mountain communities, we don't have our own source of water that would sustain the entire community here. So Tennessee American Water has been providing this water for almost 100 years. So the other thing that I wanted to, that really struck me, as you look at the three different options, so you're looking at, you know, retaining the water system within the town and having the town continue to run it, sell it to Tennessee American Water, or sell it to Walden's Ridge Utility District. And what really struck me is the difference in the rates. Some of the speakers have talked about Tennessee American Water's rates, but if you look at our rate history, even today, our water rates are more than $10 less than Walden's Ridge Utility rates for the average residential customer. And there have been four different meetings specific to the water system, not including the regular town meetings or agenda meetings, but ones that were just carved out for all town residents to attend and learn about the water system. And at one of them, the town, Boyd, gave a presentation about the water system and the viability and the need for the different improvements. And based on the 2011 Arcatis study that shows the different needs in the system, it was concluded that depending on how financing was done, rates would be needed to raise anywhere from 25% to 55%. So if you look at our history, we have a very good water quality. And I know that some people don't agree with us being involved in the community, but that is something that we do and that we believe in, particularly when it comes to educating people in the community about where their water comes from. Because that's why everybody is here today, or one of the biggest reasons. And we really would like people to understand more about their water. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening there, Hallie, and members of council. My name is Andrew Romanek. I live at 6th with Spring Pines Drive. You may recall, I came to a couple of the public meetings and spoke at one of them. I'm a licensed environmental engineer. I have a lot of background with water distribution and treatment. I do not work for Tennessee American Water or for Walden's Ridge. And I just want to say, you guys have a difficult decision tonight. On the one hand, you have two attractive offers that will provide some immediate cash flow for the city to support other initiatives and from entities that I'm confident both would provide reliable, high-quality water to town residents and at reasonable rates. And anyone who claims otherwise is misinformed on the subject. Depending on which entity you choose, they could also provide tax revenue annually. On the other hand, no one likes to relinquish control of something that, if managed properly, can be your own source of revenue. And I think managed and properly are the key words there, and that's the only ones that you can answer. Managing a water system is not something to be taken lightly. If neglected, it will fail. Look no further than the wastewater system. Granted, that's a wastewater system, but the wastewater system for Chattanooga, where they'll be spending more than $250 million over the next 10 years because it was neglected for so many years. You've had, I don't quite understand the discussion that there has been lack of due diligence and time to study this. This has been going on for months. There have been several public meetings. I encourage you to use the information that you have gained from those to make your decision. I also, you know, I don't understand that, why we can't trust our council members to review the financials and make informed decisions. If we didn't think they could do that, then we should not have elected them into office. So I don't claim to have all the facts and don't know the best answer, but I'm confident that you do or are close. And I look forward to and will respect whatever your final vote is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kent Walker, 901 Kentucky Avenue, Signal Mountain. My first awareness came with the notices of the meetings in the gym about the water system. And attending those meetings, all that was discussed was, between the two offices and the two companies. And now that I realize, well, maybe there wasn't really good analysis of what it means to keep the system. I don't see that we have any numbers as to why we need to get rid of our system, why we shouldn't keep it. I mean, I just don't understand. And I think we need to do a little bit more looking before we make this decision. Because once you get that money and it's gone, you don't have the water system anymore to try to sell later. I mean, you've lost the bargaining chip for futures. So I think you need to look at it before you sell.
Thank you, sir.
Melissa Cantrell, 105 South Drive. In 2011, Arcatis completed an extensive report on needed improvements to the town's water distribution system and provided a framework for the town's 21-year water system master plan. The Arcatis report identified water lines in two areas, Hidden Brook and Carriage Hill, that warranted consideration for replacement. In the town's recent report on the cost to keep our system, these two areas were identified as priority projects with a $3 million price tag. The Arcatis recommendation that work in Hidden Brook and Carriage Hill be done in phases, one street at a time, was left out of the town report. The town's own water line replacement plan lists year by year and street by street the areas the water department will make improvements in. Hidden Brook and Carriage Hill are not a priority there either. According to the town's own water line replacement timeline, major work will begin in Hidden Brook in 2024 with a completion date of 2035. The work is scheduled in phases, just like the Arcatis report recommended. The start date for Carriage Hill is 2030. This information was left out of the town's presentation, but then it doesn't support that we need to spend $3 million on water lines in the near future. Since the Arcatis recommendations and the town's infrastructure plan do not support the recent slideshow presentation to the council, I ask the council to delay making any decisions on our water system at this time. When asked recently, only one council member was familiar with the Arcatis report. The very first statement in the final summary of this report says, "The existing water distribution system appears sufficient to serve the town and its customers. No large growth areas have been identified. No major system upgrades are recommended at this time. I don't think much has changed since this report was sent to the town." Can the council explain why Hidden Brook and Carriage Hill have jumped to the head of the water line replacement list, along with their $3 million price tag? Additionally, as one of the customer owners of the Town of Signal Mountain Water Infrastructure System and Restricted Fund, I require answers, including but not limited to the following questions, before the system is sold. Number one, Hidden Brook. First phase scheduled for 2024, '25 in the 21-year plan. Last phase, 2030, 2031. I require the figures to date of the remainder of the work to be done in Hidden Brook, net of any work that has been done since this report was compiled. I understand that work in Hidden Brook is ongoing. Number two, I require a list of additional employees necessary to run the system and a dollar figure assigned to those positions, including health benefits, et cetera. If other employees are not at market, it would need to be compensated at market. I would like the dollar figures for those as well. Number three, I require the estimated yearly outflows required to accomplish the remaining scheduled work on the 21-year plan. And lastly, I require access to projected revenue from water rates necessary to accomplish both scheduled repairs and replacements and operational costs, including employee compensation to cover the 21-year plan. If the town can't come up with these basic projections, we don't need to sell at this time. Thank you.
Claire Grisinger, 40, Carriage Hill. When Mayor Hallie said last month that we owed it to Tennessee American and WRUD to make a decision on the water system, couldn't keep them waiting, two council members said they were ready to make a decision also. It is heartbreaking to know some council members know so little about something that is so important and will affect many, many town residents. I request the council not vote on anything related to the water system until each council member has read the Arcatis report, looked at the town's 21-year line replacement plan, has been present for a detailed discussion of the current financial state of the water fund, knows what has been done each year for the past five years as far as infrastructure is concerned. I request the council not vote on anything related to the water system until each one of the council members know basic information about Tennessee American and WRUD, such as the makeup of their boards, how commissioners are put on the WRUD board, rate increases for both since 2010, rate freezes agreed to in the RFP, how rates for both are determined, what is billed under the capital recovery riders in Tennessee American Water bills, what do the individual riders cover, the QIIP, the EDI, the SEC, and the PCOP. I request that the town does not make any water decisions until the town council can explain why Signal Mountain customers pay for capital recovery riders, can discuss the employee pension plans for WRUD and Tennessee American, know approximately how many homes already serve Signal, how many homes WRUD already serves in Signal Mountain, and what area will future customers come from, know the amount of taxes Tennessee American Water will pay yearly to the town, and can explain why WRUD, once a Tennessee American customer, is no longer with Tennessee American and bought their system back, and at what cost. This list goes on and on. If these were test questions, how many on the council would get a passing grade? Mayor Hallie has said he is confident he has three votes on this council, which is true, based on past voting records. So Mayor Hallie will really be making this decision on whether to sell the system, to who, or keep the system with the available support he always receives from fellow council members. Our council should be five individual members who do their own research, make their own decisions. That doesn't seem to be the way this council always operates. And I am sure some of the council will strongly disagree with my observations and announce that I've impugned their integrity or targeted them, but the residents deserve better than
Wow, I didn't bring any of that kind of data with me, so I may be disappointed. I'm Lisa Crowder. I live at 11 Rock Haven Lane. I'm a resident of town of Signal Mountain. I'm here to kind of, well, let me just say, the last time I was in front of you was about school safety zones. And I'm hoping I'm going to get a better response than I did with that. So I'm here again. I want to reiterate a lot of the comments that have been made tonight about taking our time, looking at different options if we keep our water system. I have no idea if it's a good idea to sell it or not, because I don't have any comparable information. I also am concerned that why we're having to do it today. I've not heard a reason of why this has to be done today, and I hope that if that's the case, someone here on the council can provide that. I'm a political person. We're looking at elections. November, we'll be looking at town elections, as Mayor Hallie said. So I'd encourage you, let's stop, take this off, take our time. And if you are passionate about selling it or keeping it, then that should be the platform that you run on and let the citizens decide with their vote. Thank you.
Ms. Crowder, thank you also for all the work you do at the schools.
Hello. My name is Chuck Pruitt. I live at 3711 Anderson Pike. I want to talk to y'all because of the, for the business community, but I am, you know, I am a, at the residence, I get my water from Walden's Ridge Utility. And I've had problems, and they've been Johnny on the spot to take care of my problems on renovation of the house. Also, I'm a customer of Signal Mountain Utility here, and I've owned the Pruitt's on Signal Mountain. We've gone through a tremendous renovation, which included a lot of plumbing work. We've changed out the entrance line. One night, when we were changing out the entrance line, we had a valve in the parking lot break, and the local plumber here, you know, knew someone at Signal Mountain Utility, Johnny on the spot, we got the valve fixed, we had water the next morning. I also am a landlord and own a shopping center in Riverview. And, you know, I've got a tenant down there that's, you know, we've been having a problem with Tennessee, with Tennessee American on getting proper water supply to this restaurant, El Primo, for four years. My last time I spoke with y'all, I think over in the gym, I mentioned this, the guy was nice enough and who said, came up to me after the meeting and said, "Mr. Pruitt, I really want to apologize. I know that's been a big job down there. We're working on it, we're getting it done." To my knowledge, right now, the tenant is still having the problems at that restaurant. I just want to talk to the business guy. Service is what we're needing. We're needing someone that's Johnny on the spot, that can take care of a situation in hours, not years. I recommend, if, you know, I have a, you know, if you're going to sell the water company, I would always believe that I would want to be a big fish in a small pond than a small fish in an ocean. I think when you pick up the phone, you call and you want something done, whoever your supplier is, they need to be right then and there to take care of the problem. I think I like Dick G.'s message about whether, about, you know, whether to sell the water company. I think the management, selling the management of the water company might be the, you know, my advice for y'all. But again, I think we're in the business for service, and whatever company you feel that can give the best service, and you can't beat midnight phone calls and getting your water back on in a grocery store within a couple hours. That's incredible service. So applause for Signal Mountain Utility. Thanks.
Eugenia Alderdice, and I think you probably know how to spell my name by now, 84 Carriage Hill. I attended all the public hearings on the water issue, and I spoke at all of them, and I think I made no secret as to hoping that you would, if you were going to sell it, sell it to WRUD. But it was at one of those meetings that Chuck Pruitt said, "Why sell it at all? Why are we selling one of our assets? Yeah, it's going to take a lot of money to keep it up, but right now, Signal Mountain residents don't know that they're not paying the true cost of their water, because the town is good enough to pay the riders, the capital riders that Tennessee American passes on." And so I started doing a little bit of research. I stay very busy at my job every day. I don't have the detail that these other speakers have brought up. They're incredibly intelligent, and they've brought up very good points. But why sell it at all? And then I went to a meeting that Dan Landrum gave, and it just seemed like we're doing this too soon. If it's going to take more money to keep our system, to hire more employees, to hire the equipment that we need, and it is very expensive, you're all so right. But I think with proper education, I think the citizens would say, yes, we want to keep something that is so valuable and so needed in a town. So I would ask you to postpone this. You took a long time with the School Viability Committee. This is even more important, because it affects everybody in the town, not just people with schoolchildren. So I'd ask tonight that somebody make the resolution that, let's cool it. We're not in a desperate situation. Let's put together a viability committee of people who are knowledgeable. I've heard tonight that there is a third party who's willing to help us. Let's just slow down and not make this another contentious issue that we're having on Signal Mountain.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Morgan?
Wendy Morgan, 1143 James Boulevard. I come before you to present a petition signed by 284 residents of our town. We signees of this petition recognize that the council has done good work researching options for selling the water system. And we request that similar care and attention be given to assessing the steps, costs, and benefits of keeping our water system. We contend that the best choice for our town cannot be determined without this essential research and analysis, and request that a Water Systems Viability Committee be created for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ann Haygood, 506 James Boulevard. I'm feeling a little redundant here, but these are my comments. Over the last few months, I have spent many, many hours learning about our water system. I have attended virtually all of the meetings, read the 2011 Arcatis Engineering Study and the town's resulting 20-year plan. I've studied the water system maps. I've talked with engineers and others who are familiar with our system and water systems generally. with our system and water systems generally. One thing is clear, our system is actually in reasonable shape. It is not distressed, it is not in crisis. Our system does need some love, and no matter what choices are made, our water rates will be going up so that we can make the needed improvements. But we are in the best competitive situation we could possibly be in. We have two water companies that service this mountain. If we keep our system and keep our current provider, they will always know there is another provider on the other side of town, ready to step into our market if they are, if we are not happy with their product, service, or rates. Sell our water company, and we lose this competitive advantage that works so well to keep our rates low and our customer satisfaction high. I am not physically strong enough to carry up here all the documents we have pertaining to selling our water system, there is a stack of them, I've looked at a lot of them. The bottom third of this one page is the only documentation we really have pertaining to keeping this valuable asset. For the audience, the source of this document is the town, and it is entitled "Proposal Comparison Including Town Projections." I think all of you on the council have a copy of this. What it gives is indeed a comparison of the projections for Walden's Ridge, Tennessee American, and the town of Signal Mountain projected. The projected rates for the town to continue operation include not only the capital rider, but also an additional 35% increase, with the notation that, and I quote, "This will allow the town to dedicate a comparable amount to a restricted capital projects fund to ensure funding for long-term capital improvements and major equipment acquisitions," end quote. That's in very tiny print on an asterisk down here at the bottom. If we apply this 35% to the water department's 1.3 million annual revenue, that's $455,000 a year that we would be setting aside every year for improvements. Town Council, it is not at all my intent to embarrass you, but if I handed you this document, could you tell us from this bottom one-third of the page, the improvements we would make, the timeframe in which we'd make them, the employees and equipment we'd need, the time spread for financing, and the capital recovery riders we'd assess in order to cover those costs? How about year-to-year projections of those items going forward? How about the projected valuation of this asset in five, 10, 20 years? No? I guarantee you the two companies who are bidding on our system could answer these questions. It is imperative that we answer these questions ourselves before we consider selling. At this stage, I am not advocating selling or keeping, it's just that we need to know what it would look like to keep it before we make that decision. But we won't know unless we decide to look. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Kirk Stafford, I live at 4484 Stonecroft Lane. So one of the things I want to bring out tonight is just the fact that we've talked a lot about the 2011 Arcadis study, we've talked about the 21-year plan. I'd like to bring out the fact that both proposals, Walden's Ridge and also Tennessee American, took all this information into account, so there's been a lot of well-informed discussion in those four public meetings that we've had in the past, and I'd like to give everybody a copy, since we've talked so much about it. And I just want to make the point that both the folks that have submitted proposals have put a lot of time and effort into that, and we respect y'all's time to listen to our points, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We need one for Carol, correct? Carol, did you get one? Okay. Here, Dan. Do you have one? Hey, I've got a copy from Boyd, it's more important, Carol has one. Yes, sir.
You ready? Rick Saputa, 216 Primrose Way. I attended some of the, Rick Saputa, 216 Primrose Way. I attended at least one of the water companies, and like everybody else, heard two people talk about something and make a lot of promises. Refresh my memory here, though, what are the $2 offers that you're looking at?
Can you hear me now? It's $4,050,000, and I think the other's...
$4,300,000.
And $4,300,000.
And $4,250,000. They're off by $50,000.
Walden's Ridge is the... $50,000 higher.
$50,000 higher, correct.
Okay. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, all the residents of Signal Mountain are not on the Signal Mountain water system?
I think it's about two-thirds, is that... yeah, ballpark about two-thirds are on the town.
So then you'd have to consider the water system an asset of the Signal Mountain water customers, not an asset of the Signal Mountain residents, correct? So, I asked this question in the, in the meeting, the question was, "How exactly do you plan to distribute the proceeds from the sale of this asset to the Signal Mountain water customers?" And I asked that question because if you just threw it in the general town pot, that's assets of the customers that you're distributing to non-customers. I believe there's some challenges that could be made to that. I don't need to talk about, about the other water quality, but what if I was to stand up here and say plus $10,000? Make the other offer.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Jackie Benkert, 707 Miles Road. Going to skip most of the comments I had planned to make, and just get down to reiterating what a lot of the citizens here have already said. We are asking for more time and more studies before the town considers selling our water system. You've offered no good reasons why we should not take time to do an MTEST study and have a committee to look into keeping our water system, the same way you insisted that a committee be formed to study your independent school district proposal. There are no costs associated with an MTEST study unless you're counting time as a cost, and it'd be interesting to hear you support that. You don't get to say that doing further study would take too much time, when you are the ones determining how much time is available. Time is on our side, unless this is a decision of political expediency on your part. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Not seeing any, we'll close public comment, and move on to the next issue. Next issue's item number seven, which is budget action. I want to be clear, I think, I think there's been some folks slightly misinformed or not understanding what we're doing. What we tried to do with the agenda was put all the possible options on, so in the effort of transparency, everyone would know what we were talking about. And that obviously worked, because you're all here. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. Again, next action's the budget action. Boyd, do you want to hit this?
This is on for... This is on for discussion, and there are two possible courses of action if the council chooses to take action. We did pass a budget continuation ordinance. If we choose not to move forward with the 1819 budget, as passed on first reading, we'll be able to proceed with our current budget until that's, that's resolved. And I don't want to speak for any of the council members, but the notion of further discussion largely revolved around the prospect of a budget that would, as proposed, drop fund balance below 35% mark of budgeted expenditures. In addition to that, there were some additions to the budget, and the desire was to further discuss those. Prior to that discussion, or I guess as a lead-in, one of the things that this process has afforded us is an opportunity to look at numbers that are closer to what we can project as actuals, because we're at the end of the year. We began this process in March, so now we're actually beyond the end of the year, numbers haven't closed out, but we have an opportunity to look at things much closer. As far as budget projections, expenditures, and revenues, I stand with where we began the process in terms of revenues that'll be generated from property taxes and so forth. At this point, we can look at where we will end up on fund balance, and there are several things that will create a larger beginning fund balance than anticipated, that we can point directly to. We had $100,000 budgeted to begin the MAC process. Those contracts were just signed, so obviously we didn't start the construction, so that didn't happen. We bid out repairing the tennis courts. Even though we extended that process, we couldn't get anybody to bid on it. The playground at Timberlinks, we've begun that process, but it was not delivered, so we don't have it. Those are things that funds aren't going to be spent, but likely will roll over and will try to get those projects done next year. It's not uncommon, we have that pretty much every year. But even if we discount those things, I think at this point, we could look at a fund balance with an additional $300,000 to $400,000 higher than we anticipated as a starting point. So I want to make sure that that point is, is, is part of the discussion process. Again, as far as the original projections for revenues and all, I stand by those. We simply have an opportunity to look at much closer to year-end numbers, so our starting point on fund balance will be a little better than anticipated.
Anybody else? Would the council like to take action on this?
I think we should take this thing back and take a look at the budget again, and not pass this budget where it is right now. We have a couple of, couple of issues, and if we find out we have more money and we didn't do a good budget, that still doesn't make that be a good budget. We also have within this budget, a, an inflation from what our two CMFOs, Certified Municipal Financial Accountants, is that right? Or Officers? Boyd Veal and Carol Hill White. Carol Hill, she's a dulcimer player. Sorry. Yeah, so we have the estimate, the revenue projection that they both agreed on based on standard accounting practices and their training, as someone mentioned in the citizens' opportunity to address. During the meeting, the mayor said it should be 3% higher, and I'd like to hear you support why.
Okay. Is that it?
Well, I'd like to hear you support why. You think it should be 3% higher.
I'll let you finish your comments first.
No, I want to know, and you might have a reason that I don't know, but I didn't hear it that day, and so because of that, if you want me to continue, I think we need to take this back, we need to remove that, so that these guys don't have to put a note on the budget that says, "This is against our advice," and it is against their advice. Would you guys verify that? Boyd?
Yes, I think I stated that in that meeting.
Yeah, but we have a bigger audience now. Carol?
So budgeting is not an exact science. I mean, I don't necessarily want to give a financial lesson here, but budgeting is not an exact science. It's based on your history and projections and your best guesstimate of certain things. Having been very involved in the budget, in the budgeting process, having added the monthly statement summary that comes in, I've been very attuned to that. And when I saw the numbers that were down there and did my own look at it, I was very comfortable that we had underestimated revenue and overestimated expenses. So, and I'll share with you part of the thought process.
Sure. Can I ask these guys, is it a guesstimate when you choose what the revenues are?
Guesstimate?
What do you base your revenues on? Revenue projections?
The line item in question for property tax revenue was based on several years, looking at the average, taking out years we did annexation, years there were reassessments, but, for lack of a better term, your normal years, and we see one, about 1.2, 1.3% growth.
What percent deviation, I guess Carol might know the answer on that, what percent deviation did we have last year? It's on that sheet I just passed out.
A deviation in what specifically?
Your projection to the actual revenue, your projection to the actual... Yeah, it's better if you don't...
For that one-line item, or for the overall?
Correct, for the revenue, total revenue projection from property taxes.
Boyd, help me out here, I'm not, I'm not getting the question.
Do you want me to finish my response, or do you, do you want to keep going? Because my response may answer it for you.
Sure.
Okay. What I've done to illustrate my point, why I was extremely comfortable with this, is I went back to the original budgets, they're on the website, that were passed originally by this council and previous councils back to 2012. If you look at it, the revenue difference, okay, from our, our professional CPMs, back in 2012 through 2017, had an average of 6.8% underestimated the revenue, and not one of those years, I mean, if you were targeting, in not one of those years did they overestimate. Okay, so back in 2012, underestimated by 6.2%. 2013 underestimated by 7.4%. 2014, 9%. 2015, 9%. 2016, 2.8%. And this year, 2017, will be 6.4% if the numbers for the end of the year hold after the audit. But, so what you have on that sheet is the budgeted amount of revenue that this council passed, and then the actual revenue. So you have an average of about 7% that we continually underestimate the revenue. On the flip side, if you look at the expenses, and not one of those years, not one of those six years were we the other way, did we overestimate revenue? If you look at the budgeted expenses, and again, directly from the budgets that were approved by this council, you have an average of 8.6% of overestimating expenses on the budget.
Right now, we're only talking about the revenue side. That's the only thing I'm projecting.
They both play together. So by increasing, so onto the expenses, and this is how I would budget too, you want to budget conservatively, they're doing what they're supposed to do, they're budgeting for every absolute possibility, but when you do that, and it's not incorrect, you generally overestimate your expenses.
But this is about income.
The average for the, for the six years, right, but they both play into it, they both play into it.
I understand that if we're talking about the whole budget, but really what matters in this case...
Under six years, not one year, did they underestimate expenses.
The reason for that, Chris, is because things don't always get done, and they move forward, and when we as a council decide that we're going to do things...
Absolutely.
We've still committed to doing these things.
Absolutely, but if in every instance, both the budgeted revenue is underestimated, and every instance of the last six years, that the expenses are overestimated, I think it's very fair to say, so the average has been 12%. it's very fair to say, so the average has been 12% if you combine the two. For us to add 3% revenue on there, would bring that down to nine, we are still conservatively budgeting in there. That's where I came up with my opinion that we are absolutely perfectly fine with this budget.
Then, great, we've got a good conservative budget. As you said at the meeting, you're the most conservative person here.
Absolutely.
It seems like the thing to do would be to go with the conservative estimate by the experts who do this for a living.
Right.
Then let's take the 3% off and go with it as they recommended we do it.
And that's fine. I disagree with where it's going to be, and if history plays out true, never once overestimating revenue, never once underestimating expenses, their conservatism, in my opinion, as the professionals doing it, is too high, because we're really getting not an accurate picture. If you're 12%, if you're 9%, 10%, 12% off...
But you're doing that on a spread with the expenses. You're doing that on a spread with expenditures.
Absolutely, because they both play together in a budget.
But the expenditures are based on things that sometimes can and sometimes can't happen. The revenue's predictable, and that's what these guys do, and they base it on general accounting standards.
We have a total swing of average over the last six years of 15.4%. That's a large number.
That's, as you like to say, the delta. That's the difference.
Right.
But we're not talking about, we're talking about the revenue enhancement. We're talking about council. Am I incorrect in this? If you guys filed this budget with the state comptroller, do you need to tell them that we didn't follow the rules that you're supposed to follow, or does it not matter?
We are following. I have to explain the rationale behind the increase in revenue projection.
And what would you say?
That that was recommended by council.
I mean, the numbers are the numbers. They don't lie.
I think we need to take this thing back and remove...
I have no problem with, I have no problem with us reopening the process and looking at it again, but I'm very comfortable, given that we, over the past six years, again, have never overestimated revenue, never underestimated expenses, and had an average of 15% off from the professionals, and they do a great job, and I would budget conservatively off. That is not the question.
But the question is not the spread, Chris, because the spread is a result of what can and can't be done in a year.
It really is a spread, though, Dan.
Then if it's, then if we're fine, because we're going to underspend, remove the 3% that shouldn't be there.
Exactly. We could do it that way, too. There's two ways to do it. You're still 9% average. If you take away that, if you add the 3% revenue up there, you still are at a 12% overestimated on the numbers.
Based on looking at the spread, and that's not how you do this. Each budget year is a budget...
It is absolutely how you do it.
Is a budget a defining document? And when you set up a budget, do you bank on the fact that, well, it's probably not going to be like this? You do a budget to balance, and we have, if you look at the amount we have spent...
And how many times in the last six years have we balanced?
It, I...
Zero.
We didn't set up a chart, but I could also show you how the numbers moved down as far as our, we're spending more than we're taking in year after year. We've been moving in a downward direction. That's what has brought us into being perilously close to violating our town's adopted fund balance policy.
But what I said has already played out. You just heard Boyd say, "Oh, boy, we found an extra $300,000. We're not going to be taking out of reserves." It's already played out.
He didn't say they found it. He said projects didn't get to get started, and that is always going to happen. It's not like you, did you guys find some money somewhere, Boyd?
No. You ever feel like you're in a no-win? This may be, but I will... I understand the point that Chris is making, but I have no problem with these numbers. And the one thing in this conversation that is, that has not been even considered is the fact that if there's a variance in expenditures, it may very well be that we didn't get a project completed, or we had an opening that didn't get filled in a couple of departments for a while.
And it rolled over to the next year.
One thing that directly relates to why the budgets end up like they do is that we spend 12 months trying to be good stewards, identifying savings, looking at additional revenues, looking for grants, whatever it may be, this staff works the entire year to make those numbers as good as they possibly can for the town. This is all a question of total revenue. We're discussing property tax projections, and I'm not saying anything I didn't say at the original meeting when we discussed it.
Absolutely.
Our projection is for a 1% growth. We did get the numbers from the county assessor's office. Their projections and ours are within a few thousand dollars.
About $3,000 to me.
Right. So that is my only point in this discussion.
This is, but to be clear, this is... Because I am trying to disparage these two, and I'm absolutely not. They do a fabulous job. They do a fabulous job.
But you don't...
And I would budget that way, too. I would budget conservatively. But given we have a 15% delta, taking it down to a 12% delta is not a big deal. That's why I was very comfortable with the numbers we had out there.
If you're, so you're not comfortable with the numbers that they gave you on revenue projections? You still stand right, sit right here and say, "We, there, we should add an extra 3%."
Yeah, I think we've underestimated, correct.
You think these guys have underestimated the way they do revenue projections?
Right. And it's consistent.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Cool.
Remind me, Beau or whoever, because it's been a while since we've had this discussion, but part of the problem with the budget this year was the fact that we brought on additional fire people, firefighters, because of the grant. Is that correct? I mean, that's...
Because of the obligation served to annexed areas in our northern citizenry.
But we had hoped to bring them on to coincide with the completion of the new fire station, and in fact, we had to bring them on.
We had to bring them on.
Early.
Yeah.
And so basically what we, and we absorbed that.
Hmm, no.
In the general fund?
The grant began earlier than anticipated.
Right.
We got the grant...
So we had to cover...
And they said, "You have to have them on payroll by January."
Or we would lose the grant. So we began covering our obligation to cover the grant, and that was a non-budgeted item, correct?
Correct. But there are also some projects in here that we didn't do.
That was addressed... I'm going to get back to my dead horse that I was beating, you know, several months ago. What we did was choose to cover the cost of the additional firefighters.
A portion because of the grant.
And delay the projects that we chose to delay.
I don't recall that tie. I don't recall that tie. Is that in the minutes anywhere?
We chose to pay out of the general fund, the cost, our share of the grant to cover the early entry of the fire, new fire team. And what I was suggesting is that that, and that did, in fact, I think, delay some projects or delayed some costs. I don't know exactly what they were. I don't have that data, but nonetheless, what I was trying to encourage us to do is get real and cover the cost of the fire protection, additional fire protection costs, and make it real, and by making it real, add, make...
At the 100%?
A tax increase. That's what I was hoping to do. It didn't pass, but that's what, that's what we were trying to do, to make the additional cost unexpected early, but it's going to continue on, and we're going to have to pay for it. It's going to, it's going to go on a budget down the road.
Well, just, just...
So I would just say, let's go ahead and, so that, to me, it's the problem of absorbing the fire protection costs that have thrown this budget into a little snitchel here, and I don't frankly think that it's a real problem going forth with this budget, knowing that we're going to have to probably add those costs to the budget when we go. Okay, I mean, it's not like we are wildly spending, Dan, and we're out of control. We know where the costs are, and so that's why I don't, I'm not quite as concerned as you are about this budget.
But have you ever been in a budget meeting like we were in last time, and not a single item from the additional capital things gets cut? Everything is good, everything is good, and then some things like a donation got added in that...
Well, that's what I was saying. We add an additional tax to cover those costs.
No, no, no. This year, we didn't add a tax this year.
I know we didn't, because you didn't agree with me. But I said, we, we elected, I think your point is, we're carrying those projects unbudgeted, and we haven't actually covered the cost of those. We're going to have to decide in this budget to either complete the projects or not based on fund availability, because they're...
Right.
Correct. Okay?
And I agree 100% with what Boyd said. That's what staff does year-round.
So I was saying, so if we want to complete those projects, because we're not going to cut back on the fire protection, if we're going to, if we're going to complete the projects that are in the capital fund, they need to be covered in reality. Now, Chris is suggesting that it can be covered by an anticipated overage, which is historically true. I mean, the numbers are what the numbers are.
The other thing is, is we were talking about...
But that's like betting on the come, and that is, you know, I'm more comfortable, frankly, covering, covering the cost of it with the tax increase that's appropriate in order to cover those costs. But we debated that.
Yeah.
We debated that, and I lost that argument, and I gave up.
We were faced with the MAC issue, and that was another $200,000 hit that we weren't expecting, and we just, we moved funds.
But we approved it without covering the cost by, I mean, that's basically the story.
We took the costs from RAC for the softball fields, for the grant we're going after there.
And, Chris, the, more or less, the agreement that you're right, that we will end up with more, more revenue...
Right.
Than we have budgeted, because it seems like we always do, and the number is pretty close. So, yeah, we are, we're, that's what we're doing.
It's entirely possible...
And I'm a little uncomfortable with it, but there we go.
Yeah, it's entirely possible that one year, more things are going to come, more things are going to come up, and the things that we promised to do Tuesday, the tennis court comes up, and now all of a sudden, we get a bidder.
But that's every budget, Dan. I mean, that's not unique to this budget.
No.
You have uncertainties that occur every year.
So in every budget, do you not look at your revenue amount and look at your expenditure amount and see if you are spending more than you have coming in? We are doing that now.
We have done that for several years.
Intentionally.
Which is taking us down to being on the edge of violating our town's adopted general fund policy. Is that a good idea?
Well, that's what the council agreed to do, because holding that much excess money is keeping the citizens' money when we shouldn't be keeping that extra money. We set for us a margin to get to 35%. We have systematically, over the last couple of years, with the hall tax, having a fitted fire station, everything else we put in, worked our way down to that 35%, because the conversation around the table was, if we keep having 50%, 60% in reserves, we're overtaxing the folks.
And this year, last year, we were just above 35%. And based on the way it had been calculated for a while, we were at about 36%. And this year, I think we're probably not below it. It looked like we were, but...
It's going to be right there.
Based on some projects that didn't come through, but for those who aren't familiar, the general fund policy says, we will keep in our, it's an unassigned balance, 35% of our expenditures in reserve. What do you mean? I can read it to you. That's what it says.
No, I said, I said, it's not 35% precisely. It's 35% minimum.
That's the target. Let me, let me say what the thing says. If we fall below 35%,
That's correct.
We will then create a plan that says how we get it back above 35% within two years, because this council in 2011 adopted a policy that said 35% is as low as we want to go.
Correct.
It's not a state law, it's not a federal law.
That's correct.
All that's true, but it is our policy, and it looked like we went below it.
The only point I'm trying to make is 35% is not the target. 35% is the minimum.
Yeah, that's not the target. Yeah, I agree completely. It's not the target.
And there's a process, if you get there, if you get there, that we put in place to then correct that situation if we get there.
And so I, you know what, even looking at the letter of the law, you could say, sure, and so until you technically cross it...
Right.
You don't have to do it. But if your plan is planned failure, and failure being going below the, you know, violating your policy, why would you do that? Why at that point, when we're this close, would you inflate the revenues by 3%? Don't you want to be conservative then, if you are conservative?
I want to be conservative at 12%, not 15%.
You're talking about the spread. I'm talking about the revenue.
But it all falls into the same pot.
But we're talking about the revenue.
For example, we're going to be $1.1 million under what we budgeted as expenses for this year.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Did I hear you say, Chris, that you were okay revisiting it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Did I hear you say that in the beginning?
Yes, I was...
Can we just do that? Can we just revisit it?
Absolutely. Now, just recommend, I think it's good, I think it's good to revisit it because it gets us closer to knowing what the actual numbers are. You know, like Boyd said, we're going to have an unexpected extra $300,000 that we didn't know about when we were in that meeting. If we had that at the time, this conversation wouldn't be going on.
We can't hear. Can you guys please be quiet?
Please. We still have a lot to get through, but I'm absolutely, I've never said I'm against revisiting it.
Do I need to move that we table this?
If we do...
Or the continuation budget?
Yeah, we need to have the second reading of the ordinance, I'm sorry, yeah, second reading of the ordinance for the continuation budget. Just be aware of what this does is it requires staff to go back and start the process over again, so it...
They don't have to start from scratch.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys.
No, they don't have to start from scratch, but we have to go through the, I'm just, I'm just telling you what the process is. If we don't approve the second reading, we're directing staff to go back and redo the budget, and that's perfectly fine with me. I'm very comfortable with where the numbers are. I'm very comfortable with what we said, and I'm very comfortable with the history. The numbers are there.
Did we ever talk about the quantity of the tax increase that I proposed? It really wasn't very much, was it? 11 cents? Anyway, I guess I would be advocating that again.
I don't recall, yeah.
If we're going back to the, back to the drawing board, yeah, I'll get another chance.
Just going on record, I am extremely against any tax increase.
You were then, too?
I know.
I am against a tax increase as well.
It's not needed at this time.
But the argument is, do we cover the costs? And if we do, how do we do that?
How do we do it?
That's what we're going to figure out in another meeting.
That's what we're going to figure out.
So do we have a motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of the continuation budget.
Second.
You'll need to read that caption for the record, please.
Yeah, I will. Do I, I don't have it, though. Do I, Carol? That's one of the ones you're holding on to.
Yeah, you do.
That's one on there.
Is it? Okay. Hold on. I'll get it. Okay, so it's the first one. Do I need a number on it? What's the number? This is the second reading, so...
This is the only item that I have a number for for tonight, so it will be ordinance number 2018-05.
05, great. And this is ordinance number 2018-05, an ordinance to temporarily continue the fiscal year 2018, 2017, 2018 annual operating budget of the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Mr. Strickland's saying that's not a...
And just, and just for, just for everyone's knowledge, this is the same thing we... And just for everyone's knowledge, this is the same thing we had to do last year. So it's not that big of a deal. We had to wait for the reassessments and that information to come back to us. All right? Any further discussion? Or we have a first and second?
I don't think, I didn't record a second. Who seconded?
I seconded.
Okay.
Thank you.
Amy did? Further discussion?
The ordinance number is 2018-05.
05.
The caption says...
I understand. It doesn't technically get a number.
Beginning July 1, 2018, ending June 30 of 2019. Is that what we're voting on? That's not what we're... We're voting on a continuation of 7...
It's this one. An ordinance to temporarily continue the fiscal year 2017, 18...
I'm telling you, I have an ordinance that...
This is the one that was passed first, so it was assigned that number.
So we're going to take that number.
Since this is being tabled, the...
It gets that number.
Continuation ordinance is the next one passed, so it gets that number.
I'm fine. Thank you very much.
All right, we have a first and second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's 5-0. We need to let staff get the information together, and then we'll schedule another budget meeting. I think we should do it outside of our regular agenda meeting.
Why?
Just so it doesn't drag on forever and we focus just on the budget topic?
Like a work session?
Yeah.
No, he's saying outside of a work session.
We're basically starting over with this, as far as the ordinance, so... Do we not have to go through enough that it's going to warrant a separate meeting? I'll let staff determine that.
I think the changes will be minimal.
Okay.
And according to, you still have to have the ordinance passed, and one regular scheduled meeting and one other meeting can do that. You still have to have a regular scheduled meeting.
Correct. One of them. And it also has to have a public hearing again. All right. Thank you all on that. Next is, on our item, is the water system action. Phil? I'll take one while you're in there.
Actually, could you grab me that, go?
Anybody want a water?
I don't.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody out there? I don't know if we have enough for everybody.
I know I can add, but look.
Air conditioning was working earlier today, I promise.
We had, Boyd was moving this to the gym, but the air conditioning there is now working.
It does not exist.
Oh, my God, thank you.
Can we make a, just as a formality, because we had advertised that this, there would be a public hearing on the 1819 budget, should you take that action? So just for the record, we note that that will not transpire, and we will reschedule that public hearing.
Okay. That's not on the agenda, though, is it?
It is.
Yes. Must have been added, huh?
It is on the agenda.
Oh, okay. It's the one, the big one in bold, you mean? The one that's sticking right out of the...
The second B.
Um, I would like Phil to take a little bit of time and address, I think all the public comment, as I'm aware, was addressed on the water system. And we were accused of gross negligence and several other things in there. Could you address some of those issues that were brought up?
Sure. At least as to your public...
Phil, is your mic on?
Excuse me. My mic on here. I'm not used to these things. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. At least as to the public hearing fiscal year 2018, 2019, it's my understanding that you are at least tabling that issue this evening. Is that correct?
The which one?
The 2018, 2019 budget.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. There will be no reason for a public hearing because you're going to have another hearing.
Right, right. So what do we need to do?
There needs to be some action, at least at this point in time, that y'all are tabling.
I make a motion that we table the public hearing for the 2018, 2019 budget.
My second.
You can table it to the next meeting or whatever y'all want to discuss that topic. If you want to do a specific date that you have, you can do it then. But you can table it to the next meeting.
Question, point of order?
Yes.
If they're passing the continuation ordinance and we're going back and redoing the original 2018, 19 budget ordinance...
Do we have to know on that?
Do we have to table or...
Vote no.
Vote no on that?
You're going to have to have at least a first reading again because you have a second reading coming up on both of these items.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything on that?
No.
Okay.
So you're going to have to have a new first reading on your fiscal 1819 budget.
And we don't necessarily have to specify when the public hearing is redone?
Not if you table it, you can bring it back up at that time.
We have a first and second. Any more discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That pass is 5-0. Okay, now we're at the water system and, okay. Would you, there was a lot of accusations thrown out there, so could you address some of those? I want to make sure we're doing exactly what we should be doing.
It's my understanding that y'all were trying to get all of the options on the table for your discussion at this meeting here. You have, at this point in time, at least an extensive period of time with public hearings before this meeting, at least four different public hearings that I've attended on this subject where there has been presentation by both the water companies involved in there. There's been public interaction and connection with those cases. That has been going on at this point since May. We had the presentation previously by Councilmember Lusk, who was the former mayor here for the town, who said that he had actually given a presentation and was on the initial committee to discuss this matter. And his email that he sent on that was April the 4th. So this is not a situation where it has been something that's just sprung on you in the last week. We had concerns at the last meeting that Mr. Strickland was making about not having enough information out there. So all of the options that are available to the council were placed on this agenda. Don't have to act on them this evening, but you clearly got them out there so the public is aware of what those options are. Those options include the aspect of retaining or continuing the operation of the water system. They also include the sale of the water system to Walden's Ridge Utility District, or they include the sale of the water system to Tennessee American Water Company. There was a dispute at the last meeting over whether there was some type of notification that was given regarding this matter being referred to the Planning Commission. So that matter was placed on this agenda at that meeting. There was clearly notice that it would be brought on your agenda at that time. That is the reason we're trying to do these things in public hearings here with an opportunity for people to be heard. You've been heard this evening. The council has to make decisions in some matters in this case as to where they want to go. If they are not wanting to go for the sale of the water system, they've got an opportunity to discuss that at this point in time. If they want to make one decision or the other, any decision cannot occur until there is some recommendation by the Planning Commission. But as you see this evening, it is difficult to get a budget ordinance passed because of the amendments that we've had to make back and forth here. And you have to do something by the matter of time. Town municipal budgets have to be done by July 1 of every year. So we've had to pass, this evening, this body has had to pass a continuation ordinance to allow them to do things on the same budget as they had last year without any improvements, despite all the work that they have done up to this point in time. That is their decision because they are the legislative body of this mountain. They have to make those decisions at that point in time, and that's what law provides. Likewise, on this decision as to the sale of the water system, it is a matter for the council to actually make decisions on. Their charter specifically requires what they have to do regarding procedures for adopting ordinances at Section 10 of the charter. And Section 11 of the charter has a provision regarding legislative action which must be exercised by ordinance. In this case, the ordinance is that we have prepared, at least for y'all to review, deal with the aspect of certain sections in the code that would have to be revised. If you're no longer in the business of operating a water company, then you don't establish those water rates. Those will have to be revised in the city code here, or the town code that will be involved. That's the reasons for the provisions that are included as to the town water rates. Those would be created by another entity. If you're abolishing or combining a department, that has to be done by ordinance. The ordinances in town involvement take two readings. They can't occur on one reading. They have to occur over more than just one meeting, and that's the reason, so that the public has an opportunity to be able to be present and to make comments. That occurs here, and that has occurred here in at least five or six meetings to this point.
Phil, I'm not doing this to be argumentative, but the conflation of the budget to the water, help me understand that. Those have nothing to do with each other.
Well, sir, they're both ordinances that we're dealing with. We're dealing with timeframes within which things have to be done.
But there is no timeframe for this water thing.
There is a time thing for the action by the Planning Commission. Someone's, at least was saying that there needed to be some sort of viability committee or something to be done. That doesn't occur forever. You've been studying for multiple months on this issue.
But there's never been a committee that looks into the option of keeping...
Sir, if you'll please let me, please let me speak. If I may speak, I am not an elected member. You asked for my advice on the legal end of it here. I'm trying to give it. On the legal aspect of an ordinance, an ordinance has to be done where there is an opportunity for the public to be able to get involved. There have been multiple meetings about the discussion of the sale of the water company. And there have been requests for, I guess, the proposals that have been ongoing and have reviewed quite a bit. There's also been presentation by the town manager. You have a full-time town manager that has given recommendations in connection with this case. There was an opportunity for at least a committee to get involved on the front end of it here to make recommendations. In fact, I understood that MTAS was requested on the front end, and they would not participate.
That is not true.
Okay, sir. That is what I've been told about the town manager.
I have, to some degree, that is accurate. We asked for the utility consultant to assist in evaluating the proposals. And initially said they would, and then they declined to participate.
I checked with our MTAS rep who checked with, I don't remember his name. Anyway, he said he wrote us and did not get an answer back. I mean, I can verify that if you need that, but... And second, what people and I am asking for has to do with something that we haven't... As Ann Higginson said, we have a lot of great information, and good work's been done by Boyd and by Bill Lusk and by folks all on, and by the bidders on the RFP and the APA. Appreciate the work that you did on that, Chris. But we have not put the same kind of due diligence, Phil, and that's what this is about. This is about something else that hasn't been done. I don't think anyone here is asking for forever. That's a ludicrous claim. And let me finish. The MTAS has said it'll take a couple of months. There is no fire. Now, Chris, you have said, we owe it to these companies to not make them wait. I don't want to do business with anyone who rushes me on a decision that's this big. We don't need... Well, I'm not done. I'm not done. I'm not done. So what we're asking, Phil, and you denied me, we had an agenda meeting, or I wasn't here. There was an agenda meeting.
Sir, I haven't denied you anything.
Let me say it, and then you might.
All right, sir?
Please, thank you. I called and asked Boyd if I, since the council decided to not allow the group who wanted to make a presentation, and asked from the beginning, we want to do this exactly like the rules, exactly the way it was done for the SSBC. So an ad hoc committee coming, came to, well, the time got changed at the last minute, and so the person couldn't make it. There's been several of those things. But then the ad hoc committee wanted to come here and make a presentation, just like the ad hoc group did for the SSBC. The council, three members of the council that were there, it's their prerogative, denied that and said, we'd like to see them outside of the meeting. And they wanted to get the same process that the ad hoc group for the SSBC got. And so I said, you know what? As you have said, and as you have said, Chris, in writing people, that we, as council members, can ask to have something put on the agenda. So I asked to have this put on the agenda. I did what I was supposed to do. I asked Boyd. Boyd said, I'll find out. I called a couple of days later, after 4th of July, and Boyd said, council, that would be you, said that since the council had denied that, I couldn't put it on. That's your call.
Yes, sir. Because the council acts as a body of five votes, and you are not five votes. The aspect of what occurs during a council meeting takes priority over one person's wishes. And that otherwise... Wait a minute, sir. Otherwise, there would be no reason to have a body. The body of five members makes decisions, not one person.
So let's extrapolate from that event that happened back at that meeting. You guys had this discussion, and Mr. Strickland called point of order, and you responded by saying, you guys need to vote on this at the council meeting. You said, you need to vote on this at the council meeting. You guys discussed what was going to happen at that same agenda meeting and decided that what you were going to do about the water system was vote on it at the council meeting.
That's not 100% accurate.
That same day, let me finish.
That's not correct.
Let me finish.
But it's not correct.
That same day, and then you can correct me.
Okay.
That same day, that I was told that I couldn't let someone make a presentation, as has been done in the past. I was also told that Chris had put these ordinances, and then the one resolution, on the agenda. And that's not what you guys decided at the agenda meeting. You decided to put the vote to send it to the Planning Commission. This stuff got added at the last minute, after you guys had already decided at the agenda meeting. Help me understand the double standard.
The double standard is that there was a request for whether you should be able to have that occur at the next council meeting, and that was denied by three members at that meeting to put that on. They agreed to have a special meeting for that to occur during that meeting. You can look at the minutes all day long, and that's what occurred during that meeting.
I think what he's saying, Dan, is we actually took action on the issue that you put on there, which was, yeah, let's hear from them, but we want to do this in a special meeting.
And to clarify, that's how the SSBC went. It was not during a regular reading. If you want apples to apples, yes, it was. It was on a Saturday, and Rob Hensley came in here. It was not a Monday night.
Boyd, can you clarify for me? That is not what happened, Boyd.
I believe there was a request at a work session.
Which is what we did.
And then there was a brief presentation and request at a regular meeting.
Which is what we requested.
And then there was a scheduled in-depth meeting with council and the more...
Yeah. That was voted by, that was voted by the resolution.
Hold on, I hear you. My impression of what you were asking for was that, the more in-depth meeting. I don't think we need some, I was okay with that, voting for it. Have a special meeting. I want to hear what they have to say. Let's put together a committee. I mean, I don't think anyone was against the committee. It was against doing it during a regular council meeting versus a special meeting.
So I would like to make a motion that we accept MTAS's offer to look into the viability of, because this is a nice compromise, to look into the viability of our water system. Take a couple of months. I'd like to make a motion.
We have a first and second. Further discussion?
I think that needs to happen. I think it's just, there's been too much. Our community continues to be divided. It's contentious. Quite frankly, this is, I think, what we need to do. So.
I'm not disagreeing with that. Part of the reason that we listed all the council's potential options were that the council, at one point, had said that they wanted Dick G. to be able to be involved in the decision-making process of this because he would... Please be quiet. Because he has been involved with this for the three and a half years when we started, when the council, I think it was even before me, started to look at this. In fact, that was played out because my first budget meeting, we had to, it came up that we were extending a temporary employee. It was temporary because they were going to go out to RFP on this thing about three and a half years ago. And Dick has been the one constant through that whole time. Some of this happened before I did. I also think that, and I would appreciate Dick's input on this because he has been so involved and understands it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sam or Boyd, but in, when the proposals went, RFPs went out in December, wasn't there a tentative schedule on there?
Yes.
And part of that tentative schedule was when we would, you know, through the whole process, have the meetings, have the public meetings, gather the information, work through everything, and then we would make some sort of decision. What did that RFP, what was that? Do you remember what the timeline was?
No, we've passed that significantly for a couple of different reasons.
So this decision was in the original schedule, which we can change at any time, was to be much earlier. Okay.
Originally.
Right, originally, which is fine. I really wanted, and I think it's the reason we asked Dick to stay on, I very much appreciate Dick's opinion, his thought process, how he goes through these, how he goes through his decision-making. It's different than mine a lot of times, but I appreciate his input. And I thought this council, at one point, said, "We want him involved in this very important decision because he's been involved." That's why I wanted to make sure we had all our potential options. If this council decides, "Yeah, hey, that is important to us," that's fine. If not, and we want to go to the study, that's fine, too. I am not 100% tight on this. I'm in a position where I can make, I feel I can make a legitimate decision on this, whether we keep or we sell and which company. But that's not fair to put on the rest of the council because I've probably been more involved because of the negotiations I've gone through, and so I've been more involved with the numbers and with the input. But I'm very comfortable if the council thinks it needs more time to take that additional time. The fact that people think there's some sort of conspiracy, we're trying to jam this thing down people's throats, it's not there. It's not, it's not true.
I agree with you.
We have said, I mean, we have said we wanted Dick involved in this, in this process. That's why I wanted these things on here, because if we still want...
Just hang on.
Please, 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 folks, if we still want Dick involved in that, we have a timeframe that we have to meet because you have to have a first reading and a second reading.
Mayor, can I comment on that, please?
And I have no problem. I have no problem which way we go, but this council had expressed that opinion at one point.
We did, and time has moved on, and I respect your opinion greatly, Dick. And I think you, you're very knowledgeable, but I think we, this has played out so long now that, and in the mieness and no disrespect, but we're not having citizens coming up saying, "Please vote so we can hear Dick's input," even though I value it as a council member and you do. And so, I mean, unfortunately, the time just got, just got smaller.
And that's fine. What we don't have...
And I will talk to you when you're not a councilman and get advice.
We can elect to do something on this that's listed, or we don't have to. But at least we made it transparent enough that everybody knew what was going on so they could come voice their opinion, and that's how this process works. And I appreciate that. So I'm up for whatever we want to do. So, yeah. What do you want to do?
Well, I understand, I understand.
We're in discussion, aren't we?
What's on the floor?
You have a motion and a second to engage MTAS for a feasibility study.
Give me a minute. Give me just a minute to comment, and I'll, and I'll back out.
Sure.
And remember, I understand I'm indispensable.
Yes, you are.
That's true. I am flattered that you all think so. I appreciate that very, very much. It is true, by the way, that I was, Boyd and I were in the initial talks with Tennessee American, where we were not seeking the sale of the water department. We were actually working not only with Tennessee American, but also with Walden's Ridge, to consider a contract to manage, to run the system. It was Tennessee American at the time, and I can't remember, that was back when, even when I was mayor, so that's a long time.
And to clarify, we were literally in such early stages, we were investigating as opposed to pursuing even that.
Yeah. So we're in this meeting, and surprisingly, I mean, and completely unsolicited, they make an offer to purchase the water department, which put in motion a long time ago. If you all think we're rushing now, come on, get real. I mean, this thing's been going on for years. A response, we had to respond to that request. We, I mean, we owe it to you, the citizens, to make you aware that that offer has been made. So we did. And so blah, 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 here we are. And, yes, and I have a lot of experience, so, but I do not believe that we should, that with the, the way the thing has evolved at this point in time, make a decision tonight. And I would suggest that you create the committee, Dan, if you're in charge of that or somebody else is in charge of that, get them here, make a presentation. Be glad to offer whatever expertise that I have, that I can remember.
Could we count on, could we count on you to, if we have, and we're going to talk about this next, but if we have, if we replace your spot on the council, would you be willing to sit down with that person and go through in detail?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would make me feel a lot more comfortable on this. So we have a motion and a second on, can you read it back, Carol, please?
Motion is to accept the MTAS offer to look into the viability of our water system.
For complimentary, correct?
Well...
Did they said they'd do it for free?
Wait. Yes, they did. The first part of their study is for free. We have, then have the option of, I think it's $3,000 for a rate study, but that would be something, they have to complete the first part.
Let's wrap all this together, I think we should. Do we want to do both?
No, I don't think we can do that. You need to find out.
I think we just need to do the first one.
That's how it works. They do the first part, and they would recommend whether or not they might get to...
I'm just asking. If we can wrap it all up now, then we don't have to sit up here and do it again, then...
Well, I'm just responding to what you're asking. I think it would make more sense when we got to the end of the study to see what they say before we decide whether or not we get a rate study done.
Should we back up, though, and just at least hear the presentation before we decide to?
Did you guys come prepared to make a presentation tonight? Did you bring a slide projector?
Of course not. I'm talking about...
We took the action that we wanted to do this in a separate meeting. That's the whole reason.
I'm just saying, should we form a committee tonight, or are we putting the cart before the horse?
I am. I appreciate where that wants to go. There's a significant difference between what we looked at with the school district and this, because you're talking about a department and an organization that we didn't currently run, that we didn't have all the information for. Whereas now, we're talking about a department with, we've run for 90 years. We have the information. It's a matter of then extrapolating out. I am more than comfortable with the MTAS. You know, we had with the SSBC, we had so many unanswered questions and no knowledge of the funding of education, which we all got extremely educated on, which I think is a good thing. But I just, I don't see the things as apple as apple, apples and apples. I'd be very comfortable with the MTAS.
So...
Let's start there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think start there, and then maybe I might make another motion after this about that other, about the second.
Or maybe amend your current motion.
Are we ready to vote on this one, by getting MTAS to do the free?
Is that the motion? I thought it was to, what is your motion?
Can you read it again, Carol, please?
To accept MTAS's offer to look into the viability of our water system.
I can, matter of fact, it would probably be, would it be good if I read Hannah's letter?
Any more? Let's, I think we're ready to vote.
We need, let's vote on it.
Are you ready to vote? You ready to vote, Bob?
I would like for Hannah's letter to go into record, though, with MTAS.
Give it to Carol.
Because it explains what an MTAS viability...
And to your point, once we get that and we talk to them, if we need to add, go pay 3,000, 5,000, whatever it is, to do a second, then we got to do it. We can do that at a different time. Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you.
May I, before we leave the water, think completely?
We just left it. No, you can't. We just left it. Oh, my goodness.
It's not a dead issue. It's not going to go anywhere. We're going to have plenty of time.
All you guys have to do is not second to what I'm about to ask. We have a process for this. I would like to request that we vote again, and I may find out that we can't do this, to allow at the next regular council meeting, the group, the ad hoc group, to make their presentation for 15 minutes to tell you what it is as a citizens' group, they want to know about our water system, so that we can research that.
If it can be there on the agenda?
We've already, and just for your knowledge, for your knowledge, we already made, took the vote that said we'd like to see that in a separate meeting. So we'd have to, do we have to get rid of that and then do this one?
You guys didn't vote that. You just kind of went, "I don't want to hear it."
I don't have a problem with it. Can you do it in 15 minutes?
Sure.
Okay. So next regular meeting, which is the August meeting. Everybody okay with that? Okay.
Yes.
We'll put that on the agenda.
Thank you.
And we'll confirm it at the agenda meeting. Thank you. Thank you all. I think we've had a records request for my calculations and stuff on the water system, so I'm going to enter that in the record, and if you could share that with whoever wanted it. Sam, and I'll continue to check and see if I have anything else, but at least we put that in. Anybody else interested in that?
I think I'm going to ask them to defer action on...
All right. Mayor? Dan, would you like one?
Yes, sir.
If we could, again, as formality...
Okay, just to clean up, what do we got to do?
Items B through E under eight, we could just defer those until...
Defer action. I'd like to make a motion that we defer action on, what is it?
B, C, and D.
C, D, and E, until later time.
I second.
Well, B, C, D, and E, correct?
Correct.
We're going to table, I make a motion, we table items eight, B, C, D, and E.
I second.
For future consideration. We got a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all, that passes 5-0. Thank you all. Hey, that was a good discussion. I appreciate that. And I know it's getting hot in here, so we'll try to get going.
Is the air broken?
It is.
Okay.
Unfortunately, sir. It was working.
I did not get in that moment.
We were going to move this because we thought we might have some capacity issues to the gym, but next on the list is the council vacancy.
And I have a point of order on this that's important.
Okay. You do this every time.
Because Mrs. Hall asked that we read something into the record that's pertinent.
All right, let me just start. Let me start and get it out there and explain it, then I'll let you, we'll hit that. I was going to hit that, too.
Okay.
So just, next we have council vacancy. And again, what I tried to do here was put all our potential options on the floor. A lot of people have been saying that there has not been a process in place. Just because you don't like the process we selected doesn't mean there was a process in place.
We never selected one.
We, geez, Dan, I mean, can you just, for a, just stop interrupting, please? Back in April, we sat around the table and we asked our council what our options were. And it went to, as far as if we don't put someone in the spot by a certain date that they can call a special election. Well, after looking through this, it's the understanding that we don't necessarily have to, because of timing, put someone in Dick's position. I don't necessarily think that's the right call. But at that meeting, we talked about a process in that looking for someone who would fill the position and promise not to run at the next election, and we asked everybody to bring names. If you got a name for somebody, bring a name. That was the processes outline. We didn't officially vote on it. Everybody agreed. Nobody was against it.
No.
You didn't agree to the, if you don't like the process, that's fine, but that's kind of what we sat around the table and agreed to.
That's what you agreed to.
Well, we had the discussion, did we not?
Yes.
And did anybody, did anybody not agree to that?
Yes. And I said, "We need to vote on a process." And we, you, if I remember, we can go look at the video because we have it. Said we can talk about that later, but for now, and we moved on. We, you saying you want to do something, and let me, but wait.
Come on.
This is not a come-on thing.
Well, I'm just, let's just be respectful. Because I can feel it coming.
All right, I respect you and you. Namaste. We did not vote on a process. Could we vote on a process tonight? And if you guys vote that we don't need to let other people from the public, then so be it. But right now, we have not voted on a process. I would like to recommend, I mean, I would like to make a motion that we follow the process for the last time there was a council vacancy. They took applications. We could, Boyd, you can find the whole process where it was done. But basically, they took applications, there was a public meeting so people could ask questions because it is, this is a political position. And then the council voted based on the applications that came in. I'll have all that down.
Exactly.
I would like to make a motion that we follow the process that has been done in the past.
Phil, I bet you weighed in on this.
If you want to hear me, I'll be glad to talk.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what Phil has to say. Let's wait to see if it gets a second, but I will not second that, and would hope the rest of the council doesn't, because I think we have an absolutely perfect person to put in that spot that nobody has, has an issue with. Is there a second? Well, first, can Phil weigh in on?
Absolutely.
What the process was?
The process that you're referring to was adopted whenever there was a recall election, and there was a two-year term that was pending on the last person that was involved in the recall election. Because of that length of term, there was a, well, sir, you could not agree, but let me tell you something first.
That may be the process for that, but there might have been a process for this.
There have been two other processes that I am aware of. Yes, sir. I have been here while there have been vacancies on the council that have been filled two other times in addition to that. One, Brendan Olin, who has written on behalf of a number of people in this case, was appointed at a process where it was just simply a vote of the council pursuant to the charter. And the charter says that if a vacancy occurs on the council, a majority vote of all the remaining members of the council may fill the vacancy for the balance of the unexpired term or until the next regular town election, whichever occurs first. That is specifically required in your charter. It's not a vote situation, sir, unless there is a situation where there's a lengthy period of time.
The word "may" makes it not be a requirement, isn't that correct?
Sir, I'm just giving you my legal advice, and if you don't want that legal advice, you don't have to take it.
I'm asking your legal opinion. That's what you're here for. Does the word "may" make that be a requirement?
That says that you can either do it that way, or you can have it in an election. If you can't get an agreement among the five of you as to filling a position, then that position can be filled in an election. One would hope that you can come to an agreement during the term, when we're talking about a short term of office until November, when the next election will occur, the town charter. That is the issue that's involved. Brendan Olin was appointed by that procedure before. I know that a fellow named Owen Leslie likewise was appointed following the death of another council member. There were short-term periods involved in those situations, so that's how the council has adopted it in the past. There was a two-year term when Ms. Paterowski ended up stepping down after a recall petition, which she won, but she decided she'd had enough of this.
May I ask you a question? May I ask you a question?
Sure.
From asking for counsel, Phil, this is what we do.
Yes, sir.
In any of those cases, did they take, did they take applications to see who wanted the positions?
I don't, I think that they asked people in the community whether they were interested in sitting on Monday nights and listening through lengthy meetings, and they made decisions in that case that they would be willing to do so for a short period of time.
Can we do that?
Yes, sir.
All right, I make a motion. All right, I make a motion.
We have a, we have a.
We have a motion.
We already got a motion. Can you read the motion, there hasn't been seconded yet?
The motion was that we follow the process that has been done in the past.
That's not a very clear motion.
Hey, Dan, Dan, do you wanna withdraw that?
I'd like to rephrase that motion. I make a motion that we seek applications for interim, for, seek applications to fill Dick G.'s seat, when, we can work out the time process, but he's not even gone, he's here. He's here for the beginning of August.
I understand the sixteenth of August.
Right. You have the sixteenth or the twenty-nine?
Sixteenth, I think. I understand it was twenty-sixteenth.
Yeah. Again, I'm not gonna, I think we've agreed upon a process, and I'm not gonna second that. Anybody gonna second it? All right, motion dies. I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint Don Close to Dick's vacant spot when he leaves on the sixteenth, so that would take effect on the seventeenth, and I think, I think the absolute world of Mr. Close, he is a man that's been in this community for the majority of his life, and he is given back to the community, and as far as I'm aware, he's the only living citizen that we actually named a park after, which is right out here behind us. So the motion is.
You were going to read Annie Hall's thing.
Okay. Do you wanna read it? I've made a motion, but we can also read that.
You said you were gonna do that.
Well, you can, whatever, all right, I made the motion that we put Don Close in that spot.
I'll second it. We would, we've already got two names here.
Hold on, no, we don't have two names here. We don't have two names.
On the agenda.
All right, so we have a first and second, now it's discussion, go ahead and read her.
We received an email from Annie Hall, who's out of town tonight, who said, "I appreciate Don Strickland nominating me to serve as interim council member through the November 2018 elections. I'm very interested in the position." Chris, I would like for you to hear this.
I've read it already, Don, I've read it. I talked to Annie, I talked to her directly.
I'll wait until you're ready to come back and join the meeting.
I'm just gonna get a water. Go ahead.
Thank you. "I appreciate Don Strickland nominating me to serve as an interim council member through the November 2018 election. I'm very interested in the position. However, absent the adoption and public announcement of a selection process by the town council, I'm withdrawing my name from consideration." And she wrote and said, "I'm unable to be there, would you read this into record, please?" So Annie Hall, and probably other students, other members, citizens that are here tonight, are also good people, this is nothing against Don Close, and that's, that makes me very uncomfortable, it seems like I would be against that person, so that's all.
Annie Hall's excellent, she supported me in the last campaign, she was very helpful, I love Annie Hall, I got no problems with Annie Hall, and I just happen to disagree, I believe this council talked about a process which Phil just identified, and.
Phil did not identify the selection process.
Just because you don't.
Phil did not identify the selection process, he identified the voting process, and he doesn't recall the selection process.
Dan, we had this discussion.
Yeah, just because you don't like it, doesn't mean it didn't happen.
That is the discussion.
Do you think this gives proper representation to other citizens who might want to fill this position?
If Dick was a year away, and he had to vacate, then yeah, the process that you're mentioning is appropriate.
If I had, if I had done this, and I had said someone, I could pick somebody in the room, and I know you guys would all be against, would this process be okay with you?
You know, we discussed this, we brought it up, we talked about it.
No, he brought it up and brought up the name the same night, and we haven't voted on the process since then.
What's your opinion, Nick?
It's your, he's your.
When, when, sorry, Bob. No, but I'm curious what you think of the process, you're still a member of this council, so.
Well, again.
Hit your mic.
Recalling is mysterious with me these days, but I do remember a discussion where Chris brought the name of Don Close to the meeting. I did not ring a name, I don't remember that we solicited names, but when I heard the name of Don Close as the potential replacement for me, I was really kinda flattered because of the things that, that Chris has said, and which I believe too, and so I didn't really give it much thought beyond that, Dan, I mean, it seemed like a reasonable, I mean, we've got a two-month, a two-month period, we have more than a capable person to, to, to fill my, my slot, and so I, I agreed, it seemed like a reasonable thing to do. Was it, was it by the book, probably not, but I think we did agree as a council that he would be a very worthy council member.
Sure, and so I'll, I'll finish, I wanna make it clear that my complaint here is not against Don Close, it's against us not allowing people to apply for this. This is, this selection is political.
You're saying Don is a political.
I'm saying this selection is political. The selection of a person who's going to fill Dick G.'s seat is a political position, and if we let names come in, which that's not the motion, so I should probably shouldn't follow that, but if we did that, citizens could have a chance to find out where people stand on issues by having them ask questions at a public hearing, and then we could vote, and people would know we were going for somebody who says, "I think we should sell our water system." I don't think we should sell our water system, I think we should sell it to one or the other.
We have a first and a second. Is there any other conversation, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of appointing Don Close to the vacancies?
Wait, we don't have a vacancy.
To the vacant position as of August seventeenth?
Sixteenth.
Well, it vacates on, oh, is it vacate on the sixteenth?
Vacates on the sixteenth.
As of the sixteenth, can we add somebody to a position that doesn't exist? Phil?
Would y'all like to read the resolution?
Turn your mic on, I'd like to hear it.
Yes.
Oh, I should be.
Just so that you would have an opportunity this evening, we prepared three resolutions for you to be able to talk about. The resolution that is involved in here is a resolution appointing Don Close to the Signal Mountain Town Council. It says, "Whereas Dick G. established residency outside the town as of June sixteen, twenty-eighteen, and whereas Article Four, Section Five of the Charter of the town requires that a council member forfeit office after failing to maintain a bona fide residence within the town for sixty consecutive days, and whereas at the request of the remaining members of the town council, Mayor G., Vice Mayor G. has agreed to serve, continue serving during that sixty-day time period, and whereas Mayor G.'s term does not expire until a successor is duly elected in the November sixth, twenty-eighteen election and is subsequently sworn into office, and whereas Don Close, a qualified resident of the town, has been nominated by the remaining members of the town council and has agreed to serve until the vacancy is filled by way of election, now therefore it's appointed that he would have a term beginning August sixteen, twenty-eighteen, and concluding upon election and qualification of a successor by way of the November sixth, twenty-sixteen, or twenty-eighteen election." That's what the resolution has, it's got an identical language for Annie Hall, it has identical language for any person that would be filled in during this meeting at a public meeting to be filled in, and there have been no other requests.
So, I'm pretending to be an attorney, and I'm an adult, I'm a dulcimer player, so we don't have remaining people, because there's no vacancy yet. The vacancy hasn't occurred, it seems to me, this shouldn't happen until the vacancy occurs.
So do you wanna table it until the seventh?
I'm asking Phil if that's what we should do.
I would tell you that, it's just my advice to you, you need to have a plan in place at some time before the last minute to be able to have a person that might be able to vote. There are many things that this body has to deal with that require budgetary considerations, the town manager can do some of them, but some of them that cannot occur unless the council makes a decision. So because of that, I would not recommend that you wait until the last minute. The resolution very clearly states that any term of office would not occur until after Dick G.'s vacancy has occurred for more than sixty days as required by the charter.
Would it be the last minute if we waited until next month?
Y'all make those decisions because y'all may fill that position, as I've just quoted to you from the charter, and if you don't choose to fill it tonight, you don't have to fill it tonight. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
I'm abstaining.
It's three, two, one, one abstention.
No.
Two to one.
Dick can't vote.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's an abstention, I don't vote.
Are you abstaining?
I don't know if it's a.
It's two to one?
No, no, just definitions of terms, is, is my non-vote an abstention?
It's not a vote.
Technically, it's not, it's a non-vote, isn't it?
Well, if you don't vote, you're abstaining, right?
But what is, sometimes abstaining means no.
The charter states that those members that would be remaining would be the ones voting.
Okay.
So.
So if it's two to one to one, does it pass or not pass?
No.
It does not pass?
Does not pass.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion then that we accept more names.
Because it's not a majority?
Correct.
If that's been carried, then I make a motion to accept more names.
I didn't hear any of that, I'm sorry.
I mean.
He made a motion that we accept more names. How do you wanna accept more names?
Let them send in applications.
Okay.
See what we have to choose from, we'll have to have maybe a special meeting, is that correct?
Sure.
If, if the council wants to establish a timeframe to accept applications, and set that deadline ahead of our next regular meeting, with enough time to review and consider those applications, so.
Are we in discussion?
Sure.
Okay, so.
We have a first and a second on that.
Okay, so rather than have another whole special meeting interviewing candidates, why don't we put out an application, submit your questions as a council, citizens, submit what you want to know from them, that'll be part of their application. We'll do that for two weeks, and then we'll vote at the next meeting.
That seems like a reasonable plan.
I would, I would ask that we vote at a regular, at the regular meeting, not at the agenda meeting.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Right.
Sorry.
Or a special meeting.
Their meeting, but I, I'm not in favor of a special meeting for that, I mean, this is a three-month seat.
Can we hear from Boyd on procedure?
I think, basically, you're talking about a three-week period, if you guys want those applications a week ahead of time to, to review them and have an opportunity to contact the folks or whatever, so that's gonna be pretty tight, that gives us basically the remainder of this week to develop that questionnaire, for lack of a better term, and then two weeks, I just need to make sure I understand what you guys.
Amy, would you, would you consider, I mean, you don't have to, but would you consider modifying your motion so that rather than us specifically asking them questions, we can ask questions of those who come?
I don't know what you mean, like, have the candidates sit, sit up here and be interrogated? No, I would not be in favor of that at all. Because I think we can get the, we can ask the same questions and not create the environment that typically comes, part of the reason that it is a hostile environment in here.
It's not hostile.
That's part of the reason.
This is not hostile, this is people who care about their community and wanna be involved.
Well, you ask, that's, it's a difference of opinion, I think I can get the answers to the qualified candidates through paper, and if, if we wanna reach out and talk to them, if citizens wanna reach out to us as council members and say, "Please find out their opinion on this," we can do that.
But what process would you like to come up with questions?
Submit questions to Boyd, repeat questions, I mean, this is getting so complicated. You tally the, the questions, and put it on the application.
Okay, so council during the course of this week will send me any questions they specifically want included on an application. In the meantime, now, this is just my offering, there, there was a questionnaire, I think, associated with one before, so I'll try to research that as, as well. There, I believe, is also a form that has to be completed for the election commission, so we'll look at that, see if there's anything that we need to be incorporating while we're at it.
Can we not do it the way we did the judge? It seems like that process went much smoother.
And we asked for letters of intent. Don't call.
I'm just brainstorming, guys, it's not, we're getting tired.
Again, it goes back a little bit to what Phil said, is when we have this kind of two, three months, we go through this process.
I know, but I think, I, I think in the interest, because I very, I respect Don Close as well, and I think he's getting thrown under the bus because some people disagree with you, and that's not fair to him.
No, it's not, absolutely.
There's no bus.
Tell him something.
Oh, yes, there is.
Again, that's your opinion, Dan's telling you your opinion's not accurate.
Chris?
Yes.
Phil asked for.
What's that?
What do you recommend how we do this? How about that?
Your, your charter specifically has prohibitions from office, so there are certain things you might wanna ask in a questionnaire of whether someone has any, I guess, I guess, they can't be a person that is a former council member until after a certain period of time, they can't hold any other elected town, county, state, or federal office during the term for which they would be there, they have to live within the town, they have to be a resident of the town, and they can't be a relative of one of you on here trying to appoint a relative to be able to vote along with you. Those types of things, I think, should be a situation where you can look at that, if you're wanting to get into what organizations you belong to, those are other things that might get further afield, but you do have to be a resident within the town, and you have to be able to say that you meet the terms and qualifications of office in order to be able to hold this position. My, my one issue that I, that was important to me when I sought out Don was that whoever that candidate is, is, will not be running in November, I think, I don't think that's fair.
Can we legally ask that question?
We did with the judge.
I didn't think that, no, we didn't, we did not officially ask it.
We voted based on that, though.
You can't legally ask someone to not run, isn't that true, Don?
You can ask them, and they can tell you anything, that's, that's one of the issues, whether you prohibit someone from being able to run is a matter of whether they have qualified in front of the election commission for the office that is involved. In this case, if someone is wanting to run for the council position here for the town, they have to do so and submit their applications by August the sixteenth, so if we're gonna try to do things, anybody that's gonna do that is gonna have to qualify in front of the planning commission, so I don't think those issues are, excuse me, in front of the election commission, so I don't think that those are issues that will be a significant point. If they're gonna be in the run, you'll know that by August the sixteenth.
So you can make your decision based on, you know, the status of that. Is there anything that you could advise us that we need to be careful about asking?
I mean, y'all can ask them anything, the question is whether they're gonna be willing to answer you, and answer so in a truthful manner, if you feel the concern with that person, whether that person is someone that you feel comfortable with sitting on the council, then you can give that whatever weight you wish. Where are we, we got a first and a second?
What's the first and the second?
On what? Of now taking applications.
Yeah, I have a, to accept, to accept more names by sending in applications.
Don, I first wanna say thank you for your willingness to serve.
Well, he may not be now.
I do not, no, his, his willingness to serve, I also want, I understand if you've run screaming from the hills, why you do so, but I appreciate it, and thank you for everything you've done for this community. We got a first and a second, could you read it one more time, please?
Accept more names by sending in applications.
Application, we don't have to go into the details of how the application's gonna be done and all that.
We could add a deadline for applications to be submitted, that would probably be helpful.
I would request that it's, that we make a decision at the August meeting, August regular meeting, not the agenda meeting, so we needed to have like two, give people two weeks to return them from the notice.
And that's public record, right, can't people just ask them directly? I mean, do we have to?
You can, you can ask them, I mean, if somebody's gonna tell you.
Maybe that's how we handle the questions, or where they stand.
That's what I'm saying.
Goes to their eligibility.
Instead of standing up.
Why, I mean, like an interrogation. I didn't mean that.
You can put the question on.
We have four weeks, basically, until the August meeting, so at least this week to put the questionnaire together.
Advertise.
Two weeks for the application period, and then that will get applications to you guys a week ahead of the meeting. So, August the third is a deadline. We can get them to you August the sixth, the following Monday, that's, that's a Monday, the following Monday's the meeting.
And Annie may wanna resubmit as well.
Yes, I bet she does, yes.
Should we simplify this, 'cause it, and I don't wanna speak for everybody here, but it sounds like the big issue is really just wanting to know where they are on the water system, it sounds like you're worried that it's political, like over the water, like should we just say, "Where do you stand on the water system," or is there a whole?
That's not everything.
I'm just clar, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm just trying to simplify the process.
It's not a hundred percent fair to ask that question too, because they don't have all the information.
Because they're not educated on it, I agree.
But we could do just like we did.
The MTA study. Yeah, for the SSBC apps, we, we asked them.
Are you for or against?
Yeah, we straight up asked them.
But that was a committee, not a, not a council.
I just, I don't, given it's only a two, three month term, I don't think we should overcomplicate the application.
One vote in that two or three months can, could have a lifetime of effect.
Absolutely, but I just don't think we need to overcomplicate the process.
So does Boyd have direction on how to, we'll do two weeks, and then how, how are we?
He'll figure it out.
Okay.
My concern would be asking any questions that might be a result of a vote for this body, do not try to get into position where you're trying to find out what the person's vote might be on any particular issue that might come in front of this council, you should not be asking that, because that would violate the sunshine law on the front end by trying to put someone into the pack to vote.
That's true.
All right, we good?
No, I wanna be really clear on that, so we couldn't ask, hmm, those people could if we were running for office, and I could, so you're saying if I, I wanna be clear, because I might violate the sunshine law, if I ask someone, "Hey, do you wanna run," and they say. if I ask someone, hey, do you want to run, and they say something horrible, like I want to fire the attorney?
Sure, let them, please. Yes, sir.
Am I violating the Sunshine Law by asking that?
If it's an issue that you are going to be voting on, and it's, it's a short-term issue, it's not an in-run around the Sunshine Law to try to get someone appointed that will vote the way that you would like to vote. We'd need to be looking for a person that you think is going to be good for the remaining two-month term of this, this office for the town. And from that point on, it's in the electorate, that electorate will be making the decision in November anyway. But you need to be trying to look for people that you think are good folks that can handle this as any volunteer person handling this position as a town council member and coming out on Monday evening, does.
That makes it tough to find out, for us to find out where they stand on issues and impossible for them.
You try to find good people. That's what you're looking for, right?
Good, there are good people that I think have bad ideas.
Okay. Sometimes good people have bad ideas. But you're trying to get a council member to extend the remaining portion of a two-month term of office, and that can be resolved at the electorate at that point in time. That's my advice.
Do you have a copy of the Hana's that you could print out?
Not, not printed out, but I can.
Email it?
I can email it, and Boyd can send it out to everybody, because we don't want to violate the Sunshine Law. We ready? Any more discussion?
If I might.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, so we're still at the original motion, as I understand it, to accept more names by asking for applications?
With, hold on, let me get my calendar back up here.
I would ask.
Now, you did say.
With an application deadline of August 3rd.
And I would, I would ask.
But then I need.
I would ask that it be amended to say the vote would take place at the regular meeting in August.
An application.
And we got a time and place, and then we make sure that somebody's in that seat. So who made the original motion?
Dr. Spalding.
Do you mind amending it?
Sure.
I think you have to.
Well, accept applications up until August 3rd and then vote on it on the 15th.
No.
13th.
The 9th.
The 9th?
9th is our regular meeting in August.
The 9th, okay.
That's not right.
13th.
13th, yeah, I was thinking, tonight's the night. Okay.
So can you read that back now, Phil?
To accept more names by sending in applications until August the 3rd with a vote at the regular meeting on August the 13th.
Any more discussion?
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is 5-0. Next.
Again, I didn't vote.
Oh, 4-0. 4-0.
Thank you.
One abstention or no vote, however that comes out. Next, we have resolutions. This is, are you going to give me numbers for these, girl?
No, sir.
A, item A will be pulled.
A is pulled.
Right. We, we will be bringing that forward, but normally a policy of this nature doesn't set these or anything like that, would be a resolution, but there's a specific TCA associated with this, and it will need to be done by.
Do we, do we need to table? Do we need to vote to table it?
Please.
Okay. I make a motion that we table a resolution item on the Agenda Year 10A, adopting property tax policy, payment policy, accepting partial payment on delinquent balances.
Second.
We have a first and second. Any further discussion?
Again, what was the rationale for that?
Initially, we anticipated that it would only take a resolution, but this specific policy requires an ordinance by, by state law, so we'll be putting that together and with the, with the multitude of other resolutions and ordinances, we didn't, didn't get to that.
Is there anything in nine that we need to table or address? Because you got discussions and resolutions, do we need to table any of that?
I believe by your procedure of a motion, which is not a resolution, but was discussed during this public meeting, and there was a motion in second to accept the applications on or before August the 3rd with a vote at the meeting on August the 13th, you've accomplished that. So those other items are, at this point in time, moved.
So up to 10A, we've done everything legally the way we should.
Yes, sir.
Okay. 10B is authorized purchase.
I'm sorry, you made a motion and a second, but there wasn't a vote.
We have a motion, second, to table item 10A. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You voted, right?
I did.
That carries 5-0. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the town manager to purchase one hook lift hoist system truck from Lee Smith, Inc., Chattanooga, Tennessee, for a total amount not to exceed $181,030 to be used by the Public Works Department for the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we have a first.
I'm sorry, it was the second?
Dick G.
Thank you.
We have a first and a second. Boyd, will you tell us about this one?
Sure. This is, as we started this program with these, these vehicles, our intent was to get, get two of the trucks and two automated leaf machines, which is also on tonight. We also have other body attachments that go with it, so this is completing the plan we set into place last year. And just as a matter of record, since we also made these purchases last year, they are also in our continuation budget, so we can move forward with, with these. We did put these out for bid, we only received one bid, it's from the company that we bought our last ones from, and these came in, the two both came in under budget.
Okay.
We really haven't had a chance to test the theory of the leaf. They came in late, but I can't, you know, I can't wait, I guess, but I can't wait for next leaf season.
We're not coming to get yours.
I know. That's a heck of a note, I'll say. I think this is going to be a great addition to Public Works.
So this is our second one, and we're looking eventually to have?
This is it.
This is it.
As it stands right now, right now, we'll have two trucks, two automated leaf machines, we have two dump beds, we have a brine tank, a lot of things we can do with these vehicles. And in, in looking at the budget, we've been able to identify areas such as the leaf machines, determine that we can actually purchase those from Stormwater Fund, because we're cleaning the ditches and keeping that out of the stormwater system.
Cool.
So we, we've basically been able to get all of these without additional funds that we originally anticipated.
Okay, we have a first, second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, or resolution carries 5-0. Next, on the.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, I don't want to, I'm going to have to leave. I've been up since 4:00 AM. I feel very, very sick, and I feel like these next things are not controversial, and I wanted to ask the council if you were okay, if I excuse myself.
I'm fine with it. Rest of the council, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
You need.
Sorry, I hope.
Amy, you okay?
Do you need somebody to get you home?
No, I'm okay, I'm just, my stomach's a little upset.
Okay. Did I have a resolution number for that one?
No, sir.
Okay. Amy, thank you. Be careful. Next on is authorized, authorized purchase of automated leaf machine, a resolution authorizing the town manager to purchase one automated leaf machine from Lee Smith, Inc., Chattanooga, Tennessee, for a total amount not to exceed $83,740 to be used by the Public Works Department for the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee. Can I get a motion?
Aye.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We got a first and a second. Boyd?
Same.
Same, okay. Any further discussion?
Is there any way we can name this after Dick G?
Kel Road.
Kel Road. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries 4-0.
You know what the closest route is to Kel Road, and we'll.
Next, and last, on the resolutions, is a resolution authorizing the town manager to submit an application for the TML Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant Program, which shall be awarded in August 2018. Boyd, can you give us a little overview before we?
Sure. This is a grant program we anticipate in every year. These are purchases that we'll be making anyway, safety equipment, boots, things like that, reflective vests, there are a variety of things that we can, we can claim on it. It's not additional expenditure, it's just a way for our, our risk management carrier, our risk insurance carrier to motivate purchase of the equipment, and since we do a good job with that anyway, it's basically reimbursement for equipment that we would already be purchasing. Up to a certain amount. It's based on our, our premiums for the year, so we apply purchases up to that amount and are awarded that reimbursement.
Okay, any discussion? I do want to go on record as saying, I think this council has done a very good job of putting the equipment and the needs of, say, the police and our different departments in, in providing the services for the town, and I, and I appreciate that very much. I agree. Can I get a first? Or do we have that already? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
I'm sorry, who?
I have first by Dan, second by Bob, Dr. Spalding. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries 4-0. Next is discussion. I signed all those. Discussion, Dan?
I just, just want to update that we've had, and I don't know if Cheryl's still here, how many weekends have you guys had working on the MAC? It's a lot.
A lot.
So they've had five or six weekends with work bees that have been basically advertised on Facebook inviting people in, and they've successfully corrected the damage to a buckled floor. All volunteer work, no fee associated with that. I think, is that?
Just in that hour alone, and then Ken pulled back to us on this, it's the most expensive floor.
There's probably 100 hours in that floor, as well as painted, painted the hallways. The girls' bathroom looks unbelievably good. They've repaired, made lots of repairs, just, there's multiple hundreds of hours that volunteers are putting in with their own time and raising their own money to give some love to the MAC. You can stop and look at it, Dick.
Are we going to use the, are we going to use the?
Can you turn your microphone?
The usual girls' bathroom?
Yes, we are.
So, and so how would you get it there? Lift, part of the front?
Yes. Okay, good. Cool. All right, thank you.
There are hundreds of more hours to put down.
Yes. So don't give a. Not done yet. And when, when are you, is it every weekend, or when do you, how, how can people get polled?
Facebook.
Facebook?
It's on Facebook.
Okay.
Preservation Fund.
Okay. Preservation Fund?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for all your efforts, too. Bob?
Yes, we were going to get a resolution, try to get drafted, on funding the Centennial through the Community Foundation, and they wasn't ready for tonight, but we'd like to try to get action on that, to give them the ability to start accepting sponsorships for the Centennial.
And they already, according to Patrick, already have several folks that are waiting to give.
Right.
So I would suggest that we try to tackle that at the, I won't be here, but at the agenda meeting, if that's okay with council.
There's a precedent, because MAC's got an accountant.
Over there with the community fund.
With the community fund, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel there.
The, the committee will have to be empowered to receive funds and direct it as, as to how they're expended and, and such, so that it will be their responsibility. And the only thing I would point out, that I don't think we'll be able to direct municipal funds to that account, but they could receive funds and expend them if council authorizes them to do so.
But they can also, if, if we're going to pay for certain items, they can take it directly to us with the proper backup. From the budget, they're, they've been a lot.
If, yes, if a purchase is made with town funds, they would go through town purchasing guidelines and all that, which.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up.
Is that something that we can act on at the agenda meeting?
I can have that drafted.
Is that okay with everybody? Will you act on that agenda? Because that is a timing issue.
It's nice to know that the funds are there.
Yeah. Anything else? I had, go ahead, Dick, why don't you go first? Anything?
I'm good.
Boyd? I had the pleasure of doing an interview on TV today with Chief, our, our police chief, and we were rated the third safest town in Tennessee, and we were actually twice as large as the two that came in from us, but I, I really think our staff, our fire department, and especially Chief Williams and his guidance, a little over three years, and his leadership are to be commended for, for that outreach and community outreach. He's really done an exceptional job, and it's a well-earned position. Also, at the, we met with the Small City Coalition. Help me out.
A representative.
Two representatives from the Small City Coalition, and we've asked them to come up and give a presentation during one of the agenda meetings, I believe it was the end of August, the August. There are several issues that will be, that will affect us that are going to be facing the legislature last year, including de-annexation issues and county tax issues, or counties, counties are trying to grab more of our sales tax dollars. And we met with them, was very impressed with their new person, Bridget, and we said that they would have to come and give a presentation to the entire council before a decision could be made if we joined that coalition with all the other small towns. The only other one in the county that's not in it is Walton at this time.
Is it still, it's not free?
No, it's not free. They, it would, yeah, it would defer, we would pay, the two smallest are paying 10% each, which is Lookout and Lakeside.
10% of what?
10% of the fee, I think it's 70,000 total. But, but that's what they're going to, I don't, I don't have it, but they're going to come and tell us everything. And then the, the other five or six split that remaining 80%.